...about to the movement. Our meeting date is Wednesday, August 15th, 2018. We will rise by application led by Assistant Director of Public Works, Richard Johnson, followed by our special release led by Commissioner Casey. Please rise.
Looks great. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to participate in this governmental process. And it's a process, Father, that you told us that we are to pray for those in leadership and positions of authority over us. And God, we ask that you would give our commission wisdom and knowledge and understanding beyond what they would have in a natural sense. Father, we just ask that you would bless this commission and this city and those in attendance tonight with a spirit of unity. Lord, I just ask, in spite of all the things that we see on our news media and the division that seems to be apparent, that you would let this be an exception, what happened to the city of Grozny. Bless those in attendance, bless us as we go for it now, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I believe this to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the thank you shout out to that prayer. Thank you so very much. All the thank everyone for coming out tonight, this evening as well. We have a lot of things on our agenda for this evening. Before I was starting, Commissioner Williams should be here shortly. Is anybody outside of the public coming?
Yes, sir. I'm Mark Addison, I'd like to address the committee.
Okay. Now, please step forward, Commissioner, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Mark Addison, I live at 252 Centillis Drive in Grozny. The apologies come down from the way I've been letting my brother hold up some papers so that he can talk and see what I'm talking about because this is the maps that y'all have been looking at that I think were the city, were the county meetings under Wicksfield and future land use maps and they couldn't see the detail because of the larger maps. If we look at those maps, which one are we showing first? Okay, this is, this is the south part of the overlay district. Put it up there. Down on the very, at Fourth Avenue and US 17, you will see a place that's pink. That's one of the off-frontage lots under the overlay plan. That's the Michael Fairman property. It's got four acres left that I think y'all will rezonate to put a ball field in there to 600 feet off of Queen Avenue. The Near Boulevard and a big stretch of marsh separates 17 from that property and yet for a summary, that property sits within on your campus being governed by this, by this plan. Go a little further north of the Near Boulevard, you see five residential properties on, on the Near Boulevard, all of which are separated by the Near Boulevard and marsh from US 17. You're saying that these are imported to the USSC overlay and are part of this process? And these are, these are items which I've brought up in discussions many times with staff. Go a little further north, you'll see a big sheeted place that's yellow. Y'all will recognize that as Howard Coffin Park. Yellow means it's a special district and not subject to the rules that you're adopting for everybody else, so you gonna tell me they're good rules for me, but they're not good rules for you. We go across 17, we look at what's now Marside Grill. That parcel fronts on 17 and yet it's coated pink, which is the off-17 designation. I think that's city property too. Y'all chose to put your property that fronts on 17 in a non-17 frontage corridor, which makes a difference in terms of what we can put on the property. We come a little further north, get on the other side of Lobster Street, we see the joint water and sewer property that used to be the day's end. They bulldozed the building, it's 300 feet off of 17, it's separated by a block plus Macon Street. That's considered part of the 17th overlay. Don't understand why. We go up Macon Avenue, we see numerous, numerous residential parcels on the west side of Macon Avenue and those parcels are listed as under this overlay even though there is an entire block, an entire block plus Macon Avenue plus, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. We come up further north, we exclude the entire Pinova Hercules parcel on the west side of 17 from this plan. We call it a special district. This special district isn't defined under your plan as having anything that y'all control or say anything about what goes on there. I've come a little further north and there are several blocks of property that is owned residential that are a full block off of 17 and you call those part of this plan. That's the second, that's on the second map. So, these are, I mean, this is y'all's map and this is what you're being asked to vote on today. And that's before I talk to you about any of the verbiage, this is just a map. Do y'all have the proposed ordinance in front of you? Because if you, I'd like to refer you to, to a few, few places.
About one minute, sir.
I'll finish in a minute. Keep y'all in the sit down. I've been told by Mr. Johnson that we can do a special district on our property and we shouldn't worry about it. If you look at page six, section 2.6b, order to qualify for a special district, proposed development must contend here with no less than three acres, have direct access to at least one street. A master plan meeting the requirements of section 2315, two of the country's only organs shall be submitted, submitted by the developer's review, approval by the city commission. The city commission in reviewing the application for a special district shall consider the proposed developments compliance with the guiding principle and design principles of the overlay district. I've been told we can do something different and it won't be so covered by it. This is telling me I can. And I can go through this chapter in verse. There are, I mean, from calling it Torres Causeway instead of Parsons Causeway and Harold J. Freeman rather than Harold J. Friedman Road to say that it couldn't be overstated as, I mean, couldn't be understated instead of couldn't be overstated to setbacks that have two minimums rather than a minimum and a maximum. This plan needs a lot of work before you decide to adopt it because even if everything, if all the errors in verbiage and in layout are corrected, I am seriously concerned that this artistic but not practical plan for US 17 will stem any hope we have for redevelopment and jobs on US 17. I think you're telling me the time.
I have to tell you that.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you for that and I, we will deal with when this come up on our agenda. So, I thank you for your support. Thank you.
Will you allow, will you allow comments at that point, Mr. Mayor?
We'll see when we get to that stuff right now. Right, it's not public here. Okay, thank you. Anybody else sign up for comment?
Oh, man.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Addison. We'll move right on with our agenda. And our first item is update, Director of Washington Library, Jared Lynn Mullis, to give update and promote the library renovation.
Hey, good evening. This is Jared Mullis, your favorite library director. And yay, everyone's up for the library renovation. So, dates, we are going to be in construction starting September 4th. So, we needed two weeks to clear the library. So, we're actually closing to the public August 20th because we have about 50,000 books to move. So, that will be fun. Anybody that wants to come with books, let me know. We'll fly wings uphill. And then we will be closing to the public until November 30th because we are doing all the fun, age back plumbing, very un-patron-like things in the library this first go. And then we will be open to the public December 3rd of 2018. We will be still under construction and then construction is supposed to wrap up spring of 2019. So, I'm really excited. Let me show you some of the fun pictures. So, this is the new layout and this is an internal, mostly internal renovation. We are doing a couple things to the front porch and the back entrance just to help with line, uh, safety as well as we are moving the new front door is where that was an existing exit door. So, we've got to make some stairs to be able to get up to it. And then, as you can see, we'll straighten out the hallway and there is so much wasted space with our hallway and the weird angles that when you straighten them up, we get our living, gin and enormous meeting room that can hold up to 400, also up to 250 round tables. We will have two small conference rooms that are about 20 to 35 and then a multi-stalk restroom that will accommodate the facility and a catering kitchen and a separate catering entrance off Bay Street. So, that was one of our other minor changes outside. For the library part, I'm really excited about this because our collection is going to be moved. So, you'll see, we're actually cutting down the shelving to juvenile height, which is 66 inches, which is about my height. So, that will let in all those, that beautiful light from Gloucester Street into the building. So, these little pop outs, we are getting some new furniture chains. We're having some great comfy seating right at the front as well as we'll have some cute new things in the children's room and then that top picture is for the teen room. So, we're getting a couple of gaming chairs and stuff like that. So, our team is very cool. We are moving the circulation system to the center and we also are getting on that far plan, we're building towards the parking lot, we are getting four group study rooms. They will be first number served, they will be free. We also will have a maker space lab. So, the library currently has a 3D printer. We also have, we will be getting a plotter printer and a big old Mac that we can utilize for our ready animator, which is a local animation studio. And we will have that space that can be used by the public to be able to use these fancy, make some things that we have that I still don't know how to use at home. Then we also will be going with some fun carpeting that is going to help us in flooring, that will help us transition and mentally transition people. So, the way our shelving will be laid out, it kind of naturally gravitates you to know that one side is fiction, one side is nonfiction. Then, you know, you've got right at the, where the help desk is, you've got kind of more movement toward this is, you know, where you're going, whereas it gets a little bit calmer towards some of the other areas. And then, as you can see, we will be having different carpeting in our meeting space to make that more of a true meeting spec, space and kind of we're doing a little bit of an upgrade in there. And the hard flooring that will be along the hallway is going to be kind of that surface point and as you can see, the big huge orange brings you into the library so that we can say, come in and see what it'll look like when you walk down. This is a brick hallway. And then into the library with, we will have that little pop of color. Something else that you'll find is that we are going to have a gate to be able to lock down the library so that we are able to have events after hours. That was something that was always, it's always been requested of us, but the way we're currently at is we can't. And something else that's really cool is the entire color scheme and thought process for some of the furnishings as well as we're using wood and matching, getting them redone is kind of nod back to the 17th building, that, the original building as well as a nod to the port. It's not kind of like with more of an industrial feel. And if you look, that, the ceilings, we actually have waffle slabs nearly above the 17th building, that portion. This is really expensive and it's not something, most of the time that people do this, they do it to put on a second story. So, it was a great little find from our architects who were super excited and heard it out loud, but it is definitely really cool. So, we're going to expose the wall slab and parts of the hallway. We'll expose the entire wall slab in the meeting space. So, that actually takes our ceiling up to 12 feet at the bottom of the wall and 13 feet at the top. So, it really lifts it up. And when you go into the library, you'll have a little bit of that wall slab. So, it's neat. I can't wait. And let's talk about money for a hot second. So, we have $2 million from a state grant that went towards this. Glen County gave us $1.5 million. That's still not quite enough. We are, we need just a little bit more specifically for technology, some furnishings and also the biggest one is books because neither the money from Glen County nor the money from the state can actually go towards books. It's, you know, bricks and mortar. And even though I think books are bricks and mortar of the library, apparently state financing people say no. But we are looking for, the library board is kicking off on August 22nd, Turning the Page, a giving campaign. We're attempting at raising $250,000 that will help us be able to finish out some of those meeting spaces with our AP as well as to be able to do some other fun things like self-checkout machines in the library to get some more furnishings so that we can have more tables and more chairs, which is only so much we can afford. And like I said, they want books. So, I'm not asking y'all tonight as city commissioners, but I'm asking you as citizens that to see if maybe you'd be interested in donating to Turning the Page. No fear, I'm not gonna, I will talk to you later, David. No more tonight. And y'all have any questions for me for this exciting time?
Any questions, questions? You throw off, okay.
The architect is David Moore out of Greenville, South Carolina. He's with Macmillan-Paston Smith. He is who did obviously his master plan back in 2014. David is a library architect. He is specialized in public and academic libraries. And he does space allocation. He actually wrote a book and worked in it. I'm sort of like totally geek out in the library world now, so we're.
You said, you said that you were changing the front entrance?
Yes.
So, does that mean where you've got that ramp that comes up the front solid brick wall, are we all opening that part up?
So, yeah, a little bit. So, what it is is where, you know, you hear the front end. So, this is the current front door. This is going to be the exit door for the meeting space. This is the, going to be the new entrance. If you see, we've got stairs here. These are the current stairs. These are going to be the new stairs. And the ramp, the ramp, we are able to actually cut it down quite a bit, including those planters beside. So, it really will take a lot of that heavy brick off the front as well as it will be very open. So, you know, when driving by, you'll be able to fully see the entire port. On the back, in the back parking lot, we're actually going to be removing the center part of that planter and then we'll be adding steps going down. So, when you leave the edge, the library, you know, you kind of pick the plan and you're like, okay, maybe go left or right. Now, we'll be able to fully go out as well as we're lowering the brick ramp railings as well to kind of get some more sight lines.
Yeah, okay. So, you just got to push the entrance, the current entrance down to where the glass is now?
Yes. And there is a current door there, which is, that's something that this architect does is he designs buildings for space reallocation. And so, he saw that that was, that door was there and could make a straight hallway and then, and he wouldn't have to actually cut into the glass. So, we won't have to ruin any of the glass fronts, which I'm so glad because I think that's really one of the beautiful architectural details of our library.
So, what's, David, yes, what's your final, completely?
So, the final completion date that the architect, or that the contractor has set is February 1st. We're saying spring? I think that is a little, I think that would be amazing, but that would be five months. So, I, the whole time, we've really been shooting for, well, not the whole time. Once the contractor was awarded the bid, he thought that the project could be expedited from our original 12 months to six months. So, I do think that the six months is a good, good heading.
So, you're saying April of 2019?
Yeah, that's, we would like, what our plan is, is to hopefully make that April 1st Friday as our, as a reopening. So, we probably, because we'll be open the whole time anyways, there'll be lots of soft openings and, or a long time for some soft openings. But yeah, our hope is that April, April 1st Friday. What a great way to kick off spring is.
Tell us about conference and meeting and.
So, yes, so this is going to be, currently the library has a meeting space. We have a auditorium that seats 125 that we do rent out to the public. We also have a small meeting room that seats 15 that we rent out to the public. So, we will be, when, when this building reopens, we will still have that same capacity. It will still be under the library. The, the meeting room can actually be broken up into three. So, that's going to be really big for us. We get a lot of folks that want small meetings, lunch meetings, you know, they're stopping from town, meetings, tight stuff. And so, we can still have library events at the same time. And then also, we can rent out after hours for, you know, some bigger events. I know in talking with Glen County, that, the building is owned by Glen County. So, in talking with them and knowing how the casino building works on the island, there's ways that we can potentially have alcohol allowed in the building, but it would be after hours. I know wine and a book do mix very well, but you'd be throwing public wine and a book not so much.
So, the catering will, how many can you accommodate?
With the catering? Well, we can accommodate, they can, the whole thing can be catered, everywhere, whether you rent a small brand or the entire thing. The catering entrance, the reason for putting it on Bay Street was so that, well, that was one, it couldn't actually go, it was a lot easier than your face, coming off Bay Street. But because we can close that off and also we can have caterers coming in and out of the library while we're open and they're not disturbing the library patrons. That is something that we run into now. So, because we do, caterers do come into the library for drinks.
You say that in once, you don't say it, you're not, please, it's parked in lot there with a day's hardware?
No, it's right here. So, and the ramp is actually a switchback and it's a full APA, but no, it'll be 341, now they basically place for them to pull up, drop off their farming carts and go back. Because that's something that we also ran into with when we do have events that are catered is the caterers having, have access into the building and then, I mean, it's kind of hard when you're, you know, pushing really delicious smelling food and everyone's like, whoa, what's happening?
Okay, any other questions, comments?
We have to do all of our checking out for the setup while we're between August 20th until November 4th.
Yes, and we are part of Kines, so you can go to the Darian or to Canton or the other surrounding counties or any one of the states that's part of Kines. But we will be forgiving any kinds and we also have any books that you have. You get a magical due date of February 2019. So, come on down and check out some books. It's actually, last night, we had, people were coming in, checking out. This one gentleman had to have help getting out to the corner and checked out so many. It was great. Bless for us too.
Well, Mr. Mullis, I want to thank you for coming and sharing with us what's going to be happening in the city of Grozny without a library. I mean, it's going to be really, really great to see so many things happen, especially out of downtown area. We're really, really pleased and appreciate you, especially your doofy ass and your charm and your, just, just, yes, I'm about beating you on what's going to happen. We, you are, we share it.
He's so excited.
You're excited, you're excited, that's what it is, you're excited. So, so thank you so very much.
Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Okay, that was really, really good. So, next we have update by Urban Redevelopment Agency Chairman, Mr. LeBron Finley, who goes to update on private activity of the agency.
I just thought I'd bring this to the public now.
I've got a box of 44 cars. Can't top that. Like anybody here. You gotta put it over there.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, just to give you a very brief update, I kind of like to continue along what we submitted on last, on last month, on last meeting. We approved the revisions that was made to the conference center. As you know, the architect, when we did the feasibility studies and what had the event planners, what had you wanted, basically they mentioned that it would be ideal if the conference center would really be somewhere around the 700, 900 seat capacity. 500 is kind of at the bottom of that, of that threshold. So, we made some revisions to increase the capacity up to about 500 seat and we were able to do that without impacting the structure. We basically just shifted basically one wall and we were able to accomplish that by moving out of the main hall. And that capacity is within the main auditorium. The, the other spaces remain the same. And if I'm going to say, one of the things we looked at also on the conference center is how it can complement some of the things that's going on in the downtown area, like the risk theater, even the library, I think, the presentation there was excellent. One other thing on the conference center. Uh, one other thing in the conference center, uh, as it relates to the construction, next Tuesday, we're planning a contractor open house. And, uh, that will take place at 5:30 at Old City Hall next week. One of the things we are trying to do there is, well, right now, we're in the process of pulling the hard costs together. And, uh, once we do that, hopefully the board will be pleasantly surprised as to the cost of the conference center. That being aside, uh, the first step in doing that is to, uh, select the individual that we was, that we would use as the project manager. Uh, we decided to go with, uh, uh, contractor management and risk approach. And basically, that's a project manager, but the individual still have the risk of completion of the project. And so, uh, you know, we can explain some of the details on that a little bit later. And so we'll be meeting next, next Tuesday at 5:30 to do a couple of things. One is, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to, well, we want to explain the project to the contractors. Uh, we may be able to look at, at someone, uh, out of that meeting. Maybe we'll be able to select someone that, well, we won't select at the meeting, but we may get, uh, a few for someone that may have been well suited for that position. In addition to that, we are extending this open house to vendors and smaller contractors and so forth. And the goal is to get what will amount to a prime contractor, which will be the contract manager. But the challenge is to try to get more local involvement, you know, in the process. So by having this open house, what we're looking at doing is bringing all the local as well as some from outer town into the process, have a, have a group of them together and things like that. And, uh, the contacts that we made, and I think we're going to get better responses once we send out the RFP. Incidentally, we did, uh, send out a RFP today for the contractor manager at risk. So that went out today. So, uh, and so if you look at the timeline that we have last week, always kind of move in mind, uh, with that. And so, um, we're still, again, looking to, let's, uh, start the construction of the conference center at the end of this year. Uh, not later than the 1st of the year, but right now, the plans is, uh, for part of December to actually start actually breaking ground. The, uh, after making our final approval of the, of the revisions of the plan, the joints are well on the way to completion and they should, again, should be completed along with the timeline that we gave you previously. Unless there's some questions on that, I'll do a quick update on Mayor Ross.
Well, I got one question, one comment, that, uh, in that contract, construction contract, we would like to make sure that we put in place in there that, uh, we at least will have 30 to 40% of local, uh, people involved in that contract, uh, destruction and so forth like that. So our main thing is our, our workforce here and doing large projects within our city, we want to make sure that we have local involvement. So that's something that, uh, our city attorney will be, that one of these people, you know, your, your URA attorney, I said, that, that's what you know, that that's something, that is a requirement, that this council would like to have local involvement in our construction projects.
And if I may say, yes, lots of that. That's been one of the thrusts of the URA to make sure we get as much local involvement as possible. Now, we cannot necessarily guarantee that it will be 30 or 40% permanently. When you look at, it's going to be dependent upon, uh, the counts and the availability of the meeting, but we will try to get, um, you know, the maximum amount actually. And that's, again, that's one of the good reasons for having this, this, uh, contractor open house, because it increases the odds of not only getting more local involvement because there's a greater level of awareness, it also may, uh, afford individuals that, that normally don't engage in the process of government bidding and things like that an opportunity to familiarize yourself to it. And as we've, I'm hoping that we'll get better responses on the RFPs.
Well, thank you. I know there are a lot of, it will be, we need some contracts doing the destruction of that project. So, uh, we'll be looking for that involvement.
Ron, do you use the, your first line for any of this advertising?
Oh, your RFP, your... Okay, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to answer that question this way. Uh, Matthew's primarily the one that's kind of handling that for us, but as far as I know, uh, both the local sites, uh, there's a state municipal site that is, that they're being advertised on as well as in the papers and so forth. Now, one of the things we're trying to do in addition to that is try to, you know, especially local contractors, they have a tendency not to get some of those, those meetings. So what we're trying to do is take a slightly different approach to try to get a little more involvement. But to answer your question, I believe so, it just can't be, you know, any, any good.
I don't want to tell you what particular, you can certainly do that with specifications that are in your proposal or request. I mean, you can certainly articulate what it is you want in there.
Referring to local, um...
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, and we do, yeah, that is in each of our proposals, so yes. But if I may say, uh, one of the challenges that we've been handling is the, the number of response, uh, with several of the proposals. And that's one of the things we're, we're looking at.
I don't know, really, you're about to...
I think we've, I think we're going to...
I got, I understand that, so that's a good...
Maybe additionally to that, is it on city side? Could that be a little...
Sure. Yes, as far as, again, because I don't have to specifically put my eyes on it, it should be. And so I'm saying yes, but in a little way, we're going to be making that business. But if not, I will follow up and we'll make sure that lives if it did.
Yeah, professional trades, um, websites and contract books on... How do you think we have a percent of response on some of the requests for bits that we've got out?
Glad you asked that. If I may take the liberty to start incorporating the Mayor Ross into the, the ZS transition, because we, we're also RFP for the native garden on Mayor, on Mayor Ross Park and we did not get any responses. And we pretty much use, uh, some of this routine, you know, means and so forth. And, uh, to me, once you start getting the same results, you've just got to rethink some things. And I think there's a series of things, uh, one is timing. Um, I think that's one of the things that we, we need to look at. Another thing is, uh, construction right now, especially in the case of Mayor Ross Park or landscaping or whatever. I don't know of a landscaper that's not busy right now. And so that, you know, the economy has shifted and, uh, people are a lot busier than they, than they are. But I, I do think, and we, we've also looked at some of the, and will look at some of the worthy of the, of the, um, uh, RFPs, but I think the, the main thing is who they're going out to. Because if we're using, we're sending out to the same folks, you know, constantly and all, all, all bodies and natives and whatever are doing the same thing, it could be that you're coming close to, uh, reaching the point of, uh, I won't say saturation as much as people become more selective because of more to choose, to choose from. So they're, they're going to be much more selective. So I think what's important, and it really gets into what we're talking about, be able to open this thing up a bit more. Uh, we will also, and we are looking at some of the requirements that's in the RFP, because many times you can have the requirements to be such that they're so restrictive. People say, well, especially when you have a limited economy, you just don't want to deal with it. Because again, you can make as much or more money without, uh, that, the hassle. So all those things, uh, we are looking at and want to get a better response. And, uh, just, you know, literally, that they say, that's why the contractor open house is so important, because we're, we're going to be able to get some of the feedback from the contractors as to, uh, you know, you know, how we can smooth out this process. Okay, also by Mayor Ross Park. You know, with Mayor Ross Park, uh, things are going really, really well with Mayor Ross Park. And as I mentioned earlier, we sent out an RFP on the native garden and we did not get any responses. So one of the things we're going to do there is that we're going to, and again, now, uh, pack the bid line, it was just ended the first of this week. So we haven't reviewed this, uh, at our, at our meeting, which is going to be next week. But one of the things that, uh, I think we're going to look at is, again, a different approach to Mayor Ross Park. But again, we're going to look at some other, also with Mayor Ross Park, with the native garden, we had, uh, you had hardscaping, that's where there's paving and things like that. You also had, you had general landscaping, which you also had, especially landscaping, because it's a native garden, one of the things we wanted to do is get some of the native plants and things like that to include in the garden. So sometimes that can require a little more, uh, work to be able to select the plants and that sort of thing. So what we're going to basically do is just kind of break things out and then make contact and just price it separately, so to speak. And I think, I think we're going to get a, a much better response when it comes to that. Yes, sir.
Is that all Phase 1?
Yes, this is in Phase 1. And, and I was, since you mentioned that, I was going to mention during Phase 1, what, what we're hoping is going to depend on the amount of funding. The native garden is, is, you know, slated, our desire is for the native garden to be a part of Phase 1, the splash pad being part of Phase 1, the playground. And I would like also to, to renovate the pavilion in Phase 1. Pavilion is going to be a, a information and welcome center. I think that's just going to be important. There'd be some other, uh, lesser things that can take place in, in Phase 1 also. One of the other things I think we have to look at, and we may or may not be able to do it in Phase 1, and that is fencing. I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to take a, a different approach to Mayor Ross Park once we do this renovation. And so, and we'll price this on these items, uh, together now. Uh, probably not this one, but the next one, but we're going to try to add that, that's what's going to determine the price for everything that we're looking at in Phase 1. The, the hard costs. And that will include the fencing, the renovation of the, uh, pavilion. Uh, restaurants, I think we looked at some issues on the restaurants. I talked with, uh, the city engineer concerning, uh, the RFP that, that they're sending out for the restaurants. I looked at those layouts of, you know, I, ideally we'll look at something a little different for Mayor Ross. I think they are a little different than what's being proposed. However, uh, if we have to go that way, we'll go that way also, the cost or whatever, but we're looking into that. But the only control of it is that, uh, the park need to be, it's going to need to be fenced in at least on three sides. I think there's going to be security reasons and control reasons and what have you. We're going to look at a decorative fence, actually, we're going to come up with a couple of options. We'll look at them and then we'll bring it up to you and, uh, obviously you will make the final decision on that. Now, on the splash pads, uh, we pretty much have, uh, kind of refined the design there. We are, again, we're working with great Southern reparations. Uh, I think we got that timeline, we should make the, uh, the final approvals on the layouts at our upcoming meeting. And from there, uh, literally the process of the start or the construction, it's going to take some time to order things and what have you. So our timelines for relaunch, if I can say it that way, of Mayor Ross Park is going to be early to mid spring. Uh, and maybe some exciting things will be happening, as the mayor mentioned earlier, in downtown Brooklyn, because Mayor Ross Park may be coming back online at the time that the library opened up, if you use our April date. Uh, somewhere around that same time period is when we're looking to relaunch Mayor Ross, at least by the next time the, the tourist season ends, whatever Mayor Ross Park is going to, at least that first phase should be completed by then. Any questions on any of that?
Well, the only comment I have is, um, the city engineer, um, on, on past project and one that we just were awarded for, um, roadway enhancement, the Farmhouse Savannah. Does, does he have that contact information?
I do have that, and I think I can send that to him.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether Monday, have an opportunity to bid or do that, but, you know...
I'm sure of that. It's been a long, it's been a long time. Be glad to send it there.
Okay. I think that'd be good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I will ask, well, right now, the art is pretty much private.
Yes, sir.
And, and what we're doing is putting different views and, uh, like this splash pad, I mean, equal of that content.
You know, to be honest with you, not, uh, certain right now, we haven't done that calculations. It's going to be, yeah, that flow is going to be a pretty good sized splash pad. And talking with, uh, the contractor, uh, over the last weekend into the weekend, uh, we've been working really hard on this. The splash pad, we decided to go with, uh, uh, basically a round splash pad as opposed to those of kid's shape design that we were looking at. And what we looked at, after looking at some cost and things like that, doing with a round pad, what's going to enable us to, uh, have, uh, get a little more people in and actually reduce the cost. And so we decided on, uh, technically, we decided on a round pad. We haven't brought that back to the full board yet, but that's one of the things we're going to be considering next, next week. Uh, it's, it's going to be a larger pad. It's going to be 50 feet in diameter. It just happened to the calculations, uh, 50, 50 feet, uh, in diameter. Uh, so we, I just haven't done the calculation as to how many to be able to access the area at one time.
So you don't have a climbing wall either, or whatever?
Oh, the climbing wall, uh, inside of the, the playground area, there's going to be a smaller climbing, well, a climbing wall for, uh, younger kids. The, the larger climbing wall, glad you mentioned that, that's one of my, my things, but anyway, uh, that may end up going into a second phase, uh, you know, we're, we're going to limit the dollars. It's about $50,000, just over $50,000 for that. I believe that's going to, going to be very important. But now that will be, uh, that will be fenced off separately. The fence that I was just mentioning actually goes around the rent circle of the park. And it will basically be on the Health Street side, the Gloucester Street side, and along Bay Street. Just basically three sides, um, they, again, just to control ingress and egress to the park.
How's that figure of marketing, what is the plan in the long?
For marketing?
For marketing. The market, the call of markets, yes, it's here.
Okay. Now, um, and, and that is one of the things we're looking at also. The farmer's market by and large is going to remain intact. However, we are looking at, uh, the, going from the river, the first two bays, renovating that to be some storage for the, uh, the little Satan group of club or what have you. And then at the front of, at the front area of the pavilion, just kind of off to the, to the, what would be the south, we're looking at building, uh, basically an extension to the pavilion to offset the space that would be taken up for there. Plus, if, especially if you have a Stugely or something of that nature, as opposed to having some of the tents kind of scattered on, scattered out, but we're looking at the standing, being able to get all those vendors kind of in the same area so that the, the competition will feel a little balanced and what have you. And, and in that same area, we're looking at, uh, the restaurant. So what we're looking at later in the proposal would be, we'll submit the joints to, is to put the extension to the pavilion, uh, to the farmer's market and the restaurants in that general area. It's going to depend upon, uh, the distance from the splash pads, because you got to have restaurants within a certain distance away from the splash pads and, and so forth. But we are looking at that.
Hey, you're talking about fence on the area in. You're probably going to have to do the riverside too, if you're looking for a place. They're not going to be coming up there by other things. You're probably looking at four walls, four fences, some four or something. Right. I think it's gonna be coming up. You know, another policy that I want to mention is, is I just read in paper that Coastal has been going, you know, with Mayor Ross, and I think that's correct, I really do. And I would request, I would recommend what their needs are there. And, you know, it's been a long time since I've been in Coastal, and I think they're well attended. We probably can hear a lot of their feedback, what their needs are, what this community needs also.
Okay. I will definitely talk with them directly. Now, we have talked with pretty much everyone that uses the park now, if they're gonna be an user, we're gonna talk with them. But one of the things we can go to do is maintain some of the open areas. We wanted to make sure that there will be a minimum of five thousand, or, you know, we wanted to try to, five thousand participants just in the open area is at the bottom level and then kind of go up from there. And I think that will accommodate most of the event that we have. But personally, I believe that we're gonna have a greater influx in the park after we do the renovations. So, what we want to do is, in the open areas, we have five thousand at the minimum and then kind of go up from there. And so, but everything that we do now will accommodate what has been going on at Mayor Ross Park. Okay?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that update. It seems that we're gonna make a lot, thank you, City of Brunswick. I'm so long time ago, you stopped seeing queens and bulldozers and all that stuff in your city. You are really on an upward mode and moving forward with renovations and making the city a lot better than where it was. So, I thank you for that update. I thank you to Mother's for the farm day too as well. So, we're gonna see some great things happen in the city of Brunswick and our community. Put in that. Thank you again, sir. All right, move right on. I have another three clubs here, on the eight, that calls city violations. Chauvin. Deputy Marsh. Deputy Marsh. Give me a minute. Again, for those who don't know, we have Corporal Paul Joel from Deputy Marsh from the City of Brunswick. Today, we're here for public care for three businesses. As of last year, I brought forth, we brought forth several times that incidents took place last year were several businesses within the city limits of Brunswick sold to underage minors during an underage alcohol scene, put on by police force. As of today, three of those businesses whose the sellers were adjudicated in Glen County State Court. Letters were sent by me on August 2nd via certified due out to the business owners. They were received August 5th. Just want you guys to keep in mind that the owners were not the sellers in these cases. So, the owners are, step forward, provide you guys information as to steps they've taken to prevent this from occurring in their establishment in the future. And you guys are obviously gonna take that into advisement as far as sanctions that you're gonna place on their business license and alcohol license up to and including suspension and revocation of the alcohol license. So, if you guys have any questions for me, we'll move right into the first public area. Move right on. The first one being Navy's Discount, the owner, Mr. David Patel, at 3001 Outtena Avenue. Mr. David Patel is present. Step forward, please. Please state the name and the address, sir.
David Patel, the business address is 2001 Outtena Avenue.
And do you know about what you've done to improve your legal situation?
Just further than my training, my boy, this first time this happened in fourteen years. Been with us eighteen years. The first time it happened was an old friend, his best boy, his family run now. So, just added additional training.
Who is providing the training?
I.
You just do it yourself?
Yes.
Is there any training that you provide? Does this matter?
There isn't, and we have established, as far as the city's concerned, is we can establish that or is that something the city commissioner wanted to decide on?
I would say that, because then we would be able to have the accountability actually come to us more than just relying on the owner to do this. We need to have more hands-on and more accountability to us and to make sure that this training is taking place, whatever assistance we need to put in place with accountability, then we would have more control over that aspect.
And speaking of that a little quick, if I may, I was speaking with Brian Corrie in the past, and we're actually bringing back what was supposed to be the background of each individual employee of businesses that distribute alcohol. So, in that process, they were filing applications with my office. I would give out the background check, and we would put them through a specialized training. And we were talking about doing something online where they would have to sit and go through a written application certificate and bring it to me saying that they completed it. They would have the training as far as underage sales, and then they would be issued a ID card by me that they would have to wear during the course of their performance. So, if I walked in and put on clothes, I could see that they are legitimate as far as the city concerned. So, that is a number of.
I agree, because I think that he would take, he would take more of the forefront and make sure that this stuff is in place. And I think it would also help the younger, because it would be more lenient on the situation.
Thank you. This is a public area. So, if anyone out there who wants to speak for or against having a comment on this issue, you can step forward, we can state your name and the address, and I'll give you two minutes. Okay, Deputy Marsh, let's go to the next business. Second public area is for Bottle Time Liquors, owner, My Test Jilau, at 1901 First Street. Is Mr. or Mrs. My Test Jilau present, please step forward. Please, sir, please state your name and the address and tell us the result of your violations and or steps you've taken to prevent the violations.
My niece was a little bit for my life, that's why we were there to sell alcohol.
Uh, we have a question, understand you. Corporal, Deputy Marsh, we've got it. So, now for that. I actually, if people, people get asked that, you guys. Okay. He said that his niece was alone working on selling the alcohol all the time, because he was not present, his wife was sick, so he was at home attending to his wife and brother. So, that's what happened with the sale of the alcohol. And they're wanting to know what steps are taking place to make sure that this won't happen in the future. He's just sure you guys it won't happen in time. And just for violation, how long have you been in business?
Six years.
Six years. All right. Thank you. So, there's anyone here who would like to speak, comment on this violation? Come step forward. Give your name and the address, and I'll give you two minutes. Sir, thanks, sir. Our highest public, this violation is Bunkie Sanoco, owned by Mr. Pincash Lamar Patel, located at 28 O'Carroll Glen Avenue. If Mr. Patel is present, please step forward.
Mayor Ross Patel, focus on Patel, that's a company called, I've been operating the business since 2005, and I'm a repeat of everyone. This is the first time since 2005 I got a violation. But as far as this is then, we started in an accident, so it was not easy.
Okay. Say anything like that?
We've been complaining that we're using our ID card.
Sounds good.
The scan ID tells us that it's a fraud, that it's an enforcement issue. So, second time it's on the line, I'm gonna try to say my name, but I'll say it's been on the trial.
Thank you.
Corporal George, our board chief. Is it once a year that the police force goes out and has some other kind of events?
We've actually done more than once. I think this last year, I committed two or three times throughout the year. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe, and I apologize if I had a paperwork in the stack or I don't, I believe these three businesses were second time violations. Really? I believe there was only one or two that were first time violations. But I'll update you guys as to that as an element. So, what I say, first time, first time, every. I think they all three said that, but I'm not quite sure how accurate that is. Again, I thought I had that paperwork in the stack, but I don't. But I will get back with you guys as to who the second time violations were. They were separate. Well, we're going to take this.
What was the final adjudication in which court?
With all three of these, the final adjudication ones, they all pled guilty. All the sellers of the alcohol pled guilty in state court. And given what the courts, the judge dismissed the case on payment of the three hundred dollar court fines. So, as long as they paid the fines, that was pretty much just like how the judge told it to happen. What is that all about?
Is it, well, I think essentially what they did is they entered a pre-trial probation program. That's something that we also do now, a similar situation. Actually, we also are, we are also three hundred dollars for a pre-trial probation. And then the same outcome would take place, and the charges would be dismissed on payment of the fine. Although we typically, depending on the violation, it would be a required community service or a period of that time of special probation.
But again, just keep in mind that that court case is just for the actual person that sold the alcohol. It has no stance with attribution or the business owner.
So, it's in the whole case.
Right.
And in these particular cases, they were treated in state non-mis.
Yes. That's what I'm saying.
This will course. Oh, yes, and you're looking at the way the law, against how you are with the licensee, you have to suspend, revoke, and replace some of the probation type condition on the license. Now, of course, we're, so there's not a discussion of the real offense, but these are all the, the type of conditions that would be placing restrictions on how long or how much to sell, sending them for a period of time, asking that they complete additional training. The one gentleman, the last gentleman that's discussed, Corporal George, and I've discussed is that they make the license that actually check validity of licenses when people present. I think that's probably a good step, and we should obviously prohibit this from happening. Those are the types of conditions that the position would be got in the non-mis acceptance of the license.
See, because I thought that we were back at this point again, because there were others. This, if I'm remembering all this right, we're back at this point again because we said the first time.
Not necessarily that we're here, we're here because it didn't that happen, so we have to address that. But there were, in fact, some, there was a total of seven that violated, and there were some within that seven that were second time or third time violated by others. But I can't say for certain that it was these three, so I'm gonna fall off on that.
We made a mistake in basing all the avenues, the actual documentation.
Also, let us know about that program we just said about the training part, you know, where we can do some of that, because something that we actually do. And also, we would look for a recommendation from you as well.
Absolutely.
Commissioner, you want to make a request?
Just may I offer a motion, we have referred to that.
Mr. Mayor, since Corporal George doesn't have that information with him, if you will be leave as fast as I can run across the street to my office, I can find that information, provide it to you in just a couple of minutes.
Thank you for wanting to do that, too. I appreciate that, but it will give us some, at the time, to take a part in this case, too. Because I appreciate that very much. Yes, sir. Every day.
And my motion to, to our second meeting in September.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That would give you plenty of time to come up with a recommendation.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Your probable motion, second, to defer this item to our second meeting in September. I did a thorough discussion. Yes.
I want to make sure that everybody knows, this thing is going to take us serious, that we're not being, you can have the, if you're out here and you violate alcohol, and you don't do the right thing, and I've made people on this panel, you're not going to have the license. That's always been a waste for me. The deal is, the other thing I want to ask you to do in Corporal George is to bring back something to us, and what Brian and you have been pushing. We need to be fair, and we need to be good, and we need to be good, whatever we did. We don't seem to play well. In that order, we need to act, we plan to be fair. We're gonna be, we're gonna take that. Bring something back to the country, all through training, we would all, that's one, that's one. The training has to be driven by us or by consent, that we, we're here and the people that are willing to do it, they should be faithful. So, let's make it a part of something that really takes some courage. It does our business. The problems are only gonna be, we're only gonna get bigger in this community. We need to be able to.
We have to know, too, what the cost of these equipment or technology is, that because our garbage licenses get more and more sophisticated all the time. So, whatever that leader is, or whatever that is, that can affect the company, it's good to know.
I can answer that right now, there's different companies that make that. If you're wanting to set price, I have to select a certain company?
Price range, just an idea.
Okay. Because they have to fit their specific quantity of sales, and every business has different ones, so.
If somebody had to, that problem, it also be something you bring back to the practice, what you can take with your product. So, that's it. If you have what you have, somebody didn't implement it, first, first, second, third, and fourth.
That will, that will be a part of the training. Because all of this stuff should be made out of training. And that's why it's so important for us to have these initial things. So, we take and expect and require a good account bill for some of our employees.
Any further comments, commissioners? Madam, all in favor of the purpose to our second meeting in September, please raise your hand. I hope you carry that. Thank you. All right. One thing I would say to everybody here, I apologize for the acoustics in this building. I know a number of you all are strange to hear, someone's coming out of the others. I'm a loud talker, as you can tell. However, we will, that will be one of our projects, too, is to make it more.
However, uh, we will, uh, that would be one of our projects, too, is to make it, uh, more, uh, be appeared, go on proceedings, just like coming to a meeting and can't hear what's going on. So that's, that's going to be one of our projects that we're going to take up to, uh, make sure we get better acoustics in the building. So, all right. Moving on, item number four, I need to consider approval. Number four, consider approval of August 1st, 2018, registered meeting minutes. Take a second for rules, Commissioners, and I understand a motion. Motion second for approval of August 1st, 2018, registered meeting minutes. In further discussion, hearing all the members, raise your right hand. I motion carries and managing. Thank you. All right, item number five, consider approval of standard 2018 miller rate. Uh, I would see your managers present.
We have before you tonight the, uh, final action for the 2018 miller rate. Miller rate, we have proposed is 13.219, which is $13.22 for a $1,000 tax value. It is the rollback rate, now, is 13.15, which means it's an approximate 0.5% increase. The city has held three public meetings, which is three public carriages at this meeting tonight. And we did not receive any feedback from the public area. This is the theater of what we maintain this rate. The reason we have any public carriages is because if you bring in any additional money using the same miller rate, someone adds a car for a house, someone built a new house, whatever, the entire balance and value of property in the city, if there's additional dollar brought in, it's considered a tax increase. And so, because we have seen some growth, we have seen improvements, we have seen additional money. All right, or will some come in. However, if you have an house, you can't change your rate, you're being, and you have the same rate, you should not increase for the city, it should be exactly the same. So one of those people who have a car, or are adding, built a new house, they're going to be paying something. You and I made no changes to our homes, they'll be the same, they'll pay the same taxes last year. And so this will be after. If there's any questions, we'd like to answer. Uh, we have issued a resolution, uh, 2013, uh, 15, this will be out.
Thank you, sir. We've had three public carriers on this matter. Commissioners, any questions, comment? That is to, this resolution is for to, uh, keep our muster rate the same, which is 13.219. So.
I'm in a motion, if we vote to approve the resolution 2018-15, the tax rates may be added to the tax rule this month.
Second. Your problem motion second, on that, on that resolution, on that motion, in the further discussion. Here it is. Madam, Clerk Longrode, please.
Commissioner Casey, having a vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams having a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin having a vote?
Yes.
Mayor President Davis having a vote?
Yes.
Mayor Hartman having a vote?
Yes. And motion carry, madam, thank you so very much. Thank you, uh, City Mayor. Thank you, uh, Commissioners, Commissioners. We will move forward with, uh, our muster rate and, uh, we will continue on to do great things in the city. All right, item number six, consider approval of resolution number 2018-14, solid waste speed resolution.
Well, we're backwards with the numbers for 2018 and 14, actually, very similar. Some of them would show up at the municipal tax level this year. I guess I should clarify, it will be a municipal tax level this year. For the first time in several years, people will see this as a tax statement for the city of Brunswick. And on that tax statement, of course, the new just passed, we'll be added. But we also need to, uh, do some business to put together this year's 2019, uh, temptation fee. What we do is with taxes, we go back and we build previous year, 2018, for the service fees and cessates we actually do for the year ahead. And so this would be for the January 1st, through the entire year, actually, 2019. If you remember last year, when we came on board with our new, uh, temptation service, public, we saw an increase in cost and the city did as they raised the rate to, to 130. And it was estimated that we would look at an increase this first year because what we did is we didn't want to put the entire year's increase on our residents at one time to soften the low use serves that we had to, uh, put a lower rate in place. Now, this year, uh, we need to actually put the current, uh, kind of the full cost of that service. And so that amount was calculated last year, it's gone through, uh, meetings last year, as well as some meetings for our budget this year. That amount was 2220 per month, 260 cents annually, uh, commercially. Uh, we also adjusted our rates by 5%, which is very similar to built-in residential rate, increased by this time. Uh, in addition, we did not make a change to commercial recycling. Commercial recycling is in addition to the, to encourage, uh, because it's small businesses, we use our services, we don't use the sensors, the big tension might recycle. Uh, the cost for us is much lower than dollars or cents, to encourage it, like to feed that amount. Very few customers actually thought of us, it's fun customers, but the, uh, commercial recycling is, uh, we didn't have that. If there's any questions, we'd like to.
Questions for our, uh, City Mayor? Uh, question, question? Uh, I want to say, um, when we started out this, this, um, process, I think our tax, our fees were $18, I believe, at one time. And now it's up to 20, 22, 26. Uh, and they, we've been having some issues with, uh, our, uh, agency that does this.
We sure have.
And we've been having a lot of calls from, uh, citizens. So it seems out of order to reward for services that we have a complaint about.
Corporal, sorry, now, the, the increase is not a reward or an increase or a raise for the company. When we went out to bid, uh, last year, we bid to the company for a three-year contract. And so not to see an increase in cost, we had a fixed rate for three years. And the reason that we're looking at an increase now is last year because we were seeing a very significant increase. We didn't want to put the full bearing of that dollar amount. Last year, we shouldn't charge for 2220, that's part of our cost. We gave everyone a break, it's part of citizens, and the city commission decided we would cover some of those costs in addition, using some of the actual funds that we had built up. And so now, at this point, those ones have really been pleaded, so we need to, to charge the true cost. So by doing this, the company will not get rates, but we will, because they're already getting paid fee, we're actually, we're actually renting from our citizens.
I, I understand that, but it's very, very, uh, public understanding of those things.
Right. But one thing, they don't get a raise, they have a fixed, they have a fixed payment for three years. But this covers all the costs and allows us to be able to move forward with content. The issues we've had, I agree, we had to talk about it as well as, uh, the public. And so I think we covered pretty well the price as well. Because we've been working really tough, really hard with the company officials to make the progress. Um, and to even our former, there's always like occasionally a missed can or a problem or a pile that's hidden. So those things are still, still happening.
You mean the cans?
We have greatly seen improvement in the last, probably, what, last 60 days?
With the yard waste primarily.
Yeah, the yard waste was our biggest problem. And occasionally, we still have a missed site, we have a missed project. Um, and that's, we're still addressing those issues. I know the waste management, they have a five-year contract. And we had problems with them for probably three and a half, four years.
We did.
So, um, I'm encouraged that they're actually putting in some good equipment, you know, they've actually added to this fleet. And, uh, I think the test will come this fall, we'll start to see the leaves fall, it's how well they can handle the addition of yard trash. So we're going to continue to work with them. Um, we, we, we were working on some of the issues that, yeah, there's. I know there's a lot of communication. I know Rick's talking to them every day, uh, and I was at one point, and I think I'm back two months a week. But, um, we, we, so far, I think everyone's still a little, little bit of their service and working on watching.
Commissioner Dammel, have you got your, Commissioner Dammel, are they still wanting to renegotiate their contract?
Renegotiate?
Are they still wanting to renegotiate their contract?
I think they would like to do that, and get back to it from now.
Could you please remind all of us what the proper contact point is if somebody yard worriesness or their, or the sanitation, they got this mess, or they should call Bethany? Or they should call the public?
They can call the public because the public hasn't called, Senator, it's our preference. Because of the issues we've had the last seven, eight months. They'll call us because if they call the public, we don't keep a record of the call. We can't keep a distance of problems and, and that's what it's.
Yeah, and we even put it in the local paper and we put out some stuff in radio to make sure that they call our dispatch because, uh, Republic, as you know, we have trouble with their dispatch, so.
I know, their phone number?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 912-267-3703. That's banking, that's our dispatch. They can also call City Hall, but we prefer to go to our dispatch.
If they call City Hall, usually Crystal was in contact with Crystal. Take the record, we should, should, should take the banking.
Because we, we shifted all this responsibility over to banking. So we need to make sure that we are, we have banking adequate to cover. Yeah, she said this stuff shifted over to her. But we just have the responsibility for the contractor that we're paying. And so now we're shifting this added responsibility. Yes, she's the, um, dispatcher, but we're paying a contractor for this. But now we are switching, um, this added, added stress over to her to handle what we're paying this contractor to be handling.
Right. Bethany actually was in point of contact with waste management. Waste management did not take the calls directly. Five years that we had the contract, she knows the full service. She would take those complaints and directly email them to waste management. So Bethany thought she was going to break when we went to Republic, meaning that Republic was going to take the majority of the calls. Um, unfortunately, it's not the case. So it's not that all of a sudden it's been dumped on her. She thought she was going to leave of some of that responsibility, even though people still promised her. Um, so it's not like it's all of a sudden flooded, except for the fact that we have a very poor service. We were, we walked.
It's a contract, it's a, we, we supposed to be out of there.
I agree, I'm just trying to say that she's, it is part of her job to work on that.
And we, we, we supposed to be out of there. That's not, that's not supposed to be a part of what she's doing right now. That's, that, that should be an accommodation, not, not an everyday thing. That should be an accommodation to our citizens. We're paying somebody for this. We need to stop putting it down when we're paying people to do things and we're making excuses for them not doing what they're supposed to do.
No, if they fail, they'd like to move forward on the contract. If you couldn't go much, it's an honorable intention, if you could go out the bid, they offered that to us. And we'd like to, they'd be glad to pull out of the contract and start again.
It is what it is. They trying to back, they trying to back throw out this contract anyway. Be realistic about it. They trying to back throw out the contract anyway. So who's suffering? I'm city resident, I'm suffering from it. I get calls at the commission on pretty much a every other day basis. So we need to look at this stuff and we need to be, we need to stand our ground on what we need to be doing as far as our contractual obligations, take our legal actions or official legal actions that we're supposed to be taking and stop waiting for somebody else to take them for us.
We're, we're moving ahead as asked for, yes. We would commission the light directly under the legal council contract. We're going to bid. But at this point, we have looked at legal penalties, we've written legal letters to the officers of the corporation. So we, we, we're.
Looking on, it's important to have, uh, some, uh, strategy for the day you stay. I mean, if they go directly to the public, the public did not report it to us, we can't track or put a damage. And part of her taking these calls, I understand that it's her, thus being able to put them on those that there are damage clause in the contract that should be adhered to. And this is the data they compiled to show how poor the service has been. This is part of the term that we're trying to look at and put them on us. And we are watching, uh, and we will, we'll have to take action under the damage clause. So I'm, I'm trying to, right, this is the ship we're on.
Okay, now you make me feel better.
We don't have statistics, we can't find them, that's.
We, we, maybe, maybe you're, uh, sure.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Well, um, Commissioners, I open this candle words. So, uh, really, we're here to talk about sale of, uh, this, uh, solid waste speed. That's basically what we're going to talk about. However, we, we do have issues with what the Republic, and we, we know that, so glad it came out. Uh, so anyhow, I have, I need a motion.
Second.
Motion second for the resolution, 2018, 2018-14, standard of 2019 solid waste speed. In further discussion. Here it is. All in favor, Commissioners, right hand. Motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Drumm. You still here?
I'm still here.
Consider approval of stabilization loan, uh, minimum for 1370 Newcastle.
This loan will be an item presented by Bethany Hill, but he's out of state. However, I'd like to honor present this. This was a project that happened before you, it came before you in November of 2016. And it's been a while, the project has probably been on hold. Uh, one of the, one of the things is this grant or this loan application that we're going to place, it's not stabilization, it's something that I brought forward to the commission during the budget that year. And we have store of buildings in our downtown core. And we don't really have that large of a store of core in our downtown. We're seeing redevelopment because people will celebrate that architecture. And we see that in the Savannah, we see that in the other communities, the great store core that we have here. And we saw buildings that were in danger of being destroyed. And so we came forward and said, we want to do two things. We want to stay the store of buildings, but we don't want to create these things. We want to see the areas that were used and put back, and, and the commercial buildings put back in commercial use and combined. And so that ran a loan, it's a really loan program, uh, that potentially has clauses for giving the loan over time. Uh, if the, uh, program was put in place, it might still change. Uh, one of those buildings, actually, the, the fire labor, was this building. And it came forward in 2016, came forward for the, the estimate of an engineer at the time, uh, who were, who agreed in our, in the wording of this program, I think it took quite a while when he worked together and how the steps would be to consider the program. But was to only fund up to one-third of the cost of stabilization. It can be used to model, it can be used to stabilize the buildings potentially over dealing with derelict buildings and working with owners that don't have the funds to model it. But we know the doctor, Evan, who's a major on it. And he didn't have the funds to remodel it. He would deal with other properties at the time to say, what can we do to hold these buildings and stabilize them until a moment come along that could actually redevelopment and put those buildings back in use? And that's what happened. We have a known owner, Chris Malines or Appleton. He was approved again for $20,000. At times, stabilization costs, uh, were much lower, at least as they were estimated. Uh, it was a couple of years ago, a couple of things happened, some of the estimates were, uh, probably not as correct as they should be. We also had, it impacts the hurricane burn since that time. They come back now, they request that, based on engineering proposals that they've received. In fact, uh, even the work that was done on the city, they came before the store preservation board. You know, they might be trying to put in place the silver, the silver block border. And this was one of the wholeness, the whole is protection business, uh, is what to do with the division of the wall. And they came, the store preservation board, very distressed about the potential of taking it down. Uh, we tried to say we could do the same buildings. The board actually voted to allow them to do it. Uh, however, even then, they didn't want to move forward with this, they wanted to see still what they could do to save the building. Uh, they come forward, they, we, we, the time, the value of the building. The city hired a historic architect, uh, engineering. The city hired a historic architect, engineering firm, to evaluate the building ourselves because we wanted to make sure, they were telling us this building was truly in as much need of repairs they sent us. And they came back and actually said it's giving me more repairs than what we had expected. So based on our own engineering report, not ones that take the word of, health fence, not like the word of the professional representative of the applicant, we felt that there was a true need to come forward and reevaluate their application for a stabilization loan. Based on the updated rates, we're looking at a building that would be now costing seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for stabilization, which will give you a completed shell, which will be stored outside of the building, new windows, new doors, everything correctly put in place for the use of the building. And all I'm talking about is plans to partner, but this would increase the amount that was given from twenty thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. We do, we have funded that amount. We've announced now that the lawyers can be approved with the city commissioners that choose to do.
Thank you for summing it up for us.
Have they answered any questions? There he is.
Any questions for owner?
Yeah. I know in here it says that you anticipate a completion time just for the stabilization portion of six to eight months, before your first blast.
Hopefully, uh, two thousand and eighteen, very good. Hopefully, the first quarter two thousand and eighteen. First quarter, yeah. Hopefully, not soon. With, yeah, with the historic preservation board, through the most recent lines that we've submitted, with that approval, and of course with this, our plans are hundred percent complete, which should add price on the total project, including the stabilization of the purchase of twenty thousand on Monday. If that is the base standard or steel, it's a Liz next week, once we put the contract, if it's got twelve weeks to sign, it's likely to be poured within four weeks of ordering steel, so it's been a change of a lot. Our initial plan has left a sixty-five ninety lot of cover. This is going to push the real estate out, so as long as you'll be at twenty-five ninety lot of covers, so basically from thirteen seventeen Newcastle to within twenty-five thirty mark, it's not going to be a contraction in real estate.
So you have your layers of funding in place, and you walked along the way to?
Well, with our banking, we actually pre-approved through the bank and SBA, but they told us because the price has changed, so wait till we come back one more time, I'll be submitted two or three times, just get it back together and submit it. Yeah, our peer group is already done, we're just waiting to actually put our contract and be submitted to both man and woman.
Okay. Were you, were you able to take advantage of, maybe for hauling lung fine?
No, we, we haven't, we haven't seen that yet. We haven't, we haven't seen that.
Have you ever where?
We are aware of that, Matthew, it's actually, we're talking about state, yes, that is a possibility, but we haven't, we haven't explored that yet. It's a matter of thought. Well, we're going to restore the building to historically correct as we've had, you know, it's changed over time, the historic fronts, the spindlers, and so we have a lot of historic photos that come back to it, but we want to restore the, the shell as best we can as possible so we can down the road pursue restored actuaries. We want to have that option. So with that restored actuaries, there has to be air correct for the windows, you have to put glass back on the walls, and there's a lot of things that we have to do just to fly.
Yeah, so then, or processing.
Yes, a lot of time.
Yeah, sure.
With this, we're able to save the building, the business. We own the building since March of two thousand seventeen, we had a TTP approval from the states in June two thousand seventeen, so we've been working on it, you know, still remain dedicated to the revitalization of content. We'll first try to be able to move what we probably want to be a part of, everything else that's going on, so.
We've worked our efforts, I know it's been a long time coming.
Yes.
The journey has not been easy.
Yeah, it's a long, a long, a long road to travel.
Any further questions, commissioners? Comments?
Just want to make a comment. Finance committee, they take a look at this and after we talk crystal clear, we kind of shielded it. We're not going to fall down in the mud after we look at the approval, and not going, okay, we got approval, wait eight, nine, ten months before they start working. With that, we told them that we would make a reservation to approve, to approve.
Mr. Mayor, additional, I want to add, the information was required to approve as well, they approved it as well as the downtown building, so all, all, finance has approved it right now. It's a process.
We're, we're excited about what you showed us.
Thanks. And we are going to do it simultaneously because we need that wall and that side stabilized before we have patrons walk around.
What, what do you anticipate as your total number of employees, of your jobs that you're creating?
Well, in the beginning, we're only going to go for days of weeks, if you're Saturday.
You're only going to do one day.
We're going to be open four days a week, Wednesday through Saturday. So within our staff, we're probably going to have ten people on rotation, and have to have floor manager, have to have, have assistant, who are regular on salesperson. It will become a lot of the orders because we're already in business, and so we're going to have to try to cut costs as best we can, but I mean, at least six to seven full-time employees, probably ten to fifteen part-time employees. Obviously, the faster we grow, the faster we can have more permanent employees, but that's what we're set up for.
If that's the process.
We've explored and looked at everything, we're just trying to kind of get one thing under our belt and then get the rest of these stuffs.
Okay, have you, been blessed by John Boyles?
We have, we paid our deposit June of two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
It's actually.
Well, that's going to be, yes, sir. Okay, all right. Commissioners, I would like to make a motion that there will be a discussion. Second? Motion second for the pool of the stabilization loan, loan, excuse me. I want to say we're very happy about that. In further discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Emotional care for that.
Thank you very much.
You go forward and do good there.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Okay, to move on a little further quickly, so we get to our attorney item right now, item number eight, consider approval of flood insurance renewal, our assistance. My director, Lynn Bailey, is attending.
You should have in your book, that's back and forth, and also an Excel spreadsheet that was prepared for us on Friday morning. If you want to pull that out, okay. I'm sure y'all are aware that we have some changes in our flood maps year to year, and we will benefited by that on three of our properties. If you look at the spreadsheet, the first column to your right shows you the renewal premium, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. And then the column right beside it compares premiums year to year. We actually in total decreased a little over thirty-five hundred dollars year to year. But you'll notice that some of the policies under the Lloyds of London, we have three that are insured under the NFIP, we pay American Bankers Insurance for those, and the other pay the Lloyds of London. Some of those increased, I felt like, rather significantly. But then, on the other hand, we had three properties that were, when the flood map changed, went from, and Fred was nice enough to put us in a column, right next to, is the fourth column over, it compares the old flood map into the new. We had three, the eleven oh nine H Street, the two hundred I Street, and the twelve oh one Gloucester Street, went from A E to shaded X. And those were the policies that dropped fairly significantly, so we had some savings there, and I got for some of the other ones, like we passed along linear boulevard that went up. Fred shopped around for us, he did some finagling with the deductibles to give us the best rate of what he could. One thing that he suggested, because he's always looking at saving us as far as our budget monies are concerned, he said that if we wanted to consider, just like we did last year, we drop the Lloyds of London policy on City Hall, that doesn't mean we're not covered under flood insurance. We have, we have ten million in flood insurance on all of our buildings through Vermont. Fred said, if you wanted to think about not insuring old City Hall for the same reason, because that would save us ninety-two hundred dollars. We'd still have flood insurance, ninety-two hundred dollars. We'd still have flood insurance. And I want to quote him because he said this well, I thought he explained it to me. He said, "In an effort to reduce our premium expense without assuming significant additional risk, we could choose to not renew the Lloyds of London flood insurance policy on Old City Hall. Because of the building's elevation and the location of its insurable contents, only the contents located on the first and second floors are covered under flood insurance." The basic structure is covered under flood insurance, but none of its contents. So we would, we're still covered by flood insurance through Vermont. It wouldn't be that we'd be uncovered. This is just, that ninety-two hundred dollars is buying us additional coverage. So that was a suggestion that he made, if we wanted to look at saving some money this year. Our, our budget number was based on the twenty-eighth, the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen premium. So as far as budget goes, we're right in line with what we budgeted for flood insurance if we were moving at the total of forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. So it's up to y'all, you tell me what we have to do if we're here as it is, or we consider dropping that Lloyds of London flood coverage on Old City Hall.
Uh, city manager, do we have any issue with flood insurance last year for hurricane and what's it all?
The whole city, the flood and water are getting to the, some of the, 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 this building is very small. It's about half the size of very private, your, 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 so it's, it's water going there, you can drag it out. First floor is elevated so high, and then there's a lot of, even the photos that we saw from eighteen ninety is everything that surprises me, why, but, but, of course, it's true. So really, it's very like, it's, 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 along this.
Do we have any, 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 we have anything in basic of value?
No, sir.
You know, what, what you got is you've got an addition that has some trouble. Elevator over here.
That's true.
And you need to, you know, jeopardize that.
I don't really, because you think it's already. The elevator.
The elevator, you could not mention that to me, but I can certainly ask the crowd now.
We didn't take any water in that portion of the building the last two hurricanes. Blue can, because function of the elevator is higher than its bottom, which is, which is the ground. But I mean, you're not, we're, we're all limiting, I think that we should realize that we still have significant, this is secondary coverage to first coverage.
And in the past two hurricanes, you got the most damage from raining and not flood.
Let's just be sure you can be sure we're covered.
We need to take that.
We have, we have ten million dollars.
We have ten million coverage through Vermont for floods. Is that the L shape or would be covered through Vermont?
So we have pretty backup insurance, that we haven't used the first insurance.
Right.
Very extreme.
So if we live there at the, Lord of London, not out of two hundred, we look at thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
Correct, yes.
Okay, for the discussion, listeners, we have an issue to, we can let's say it is or we can eliminate Lord of London insurance for our, what's it called? What's the little bit?
I'm going to offer motion that we approve the insurance with removal of the Lord of London price for, for, well, seven, one point seven Newcastle to Old City Hall, and for total amount, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Second?
Okay, department motion second for us to eliminate the Old City Hall, Lord of London, from this, our new flood insurance total. Further discussion?
Provide, to be sure that this is completely covered.
Does the elevator is covered by, by, by Vermont?
Yes.
And we, we don't have to come back for any reason at all. We don't, we drop the ball, and just go call people, like, just, and that's a permission.
The, 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 the,
This, this is strictly, because we've already, no, 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 my time was before we went in April, but that's not the year, right, properly, right, and this is just, because I'm, I'm looking at, at the replacement cost, the same depth of all the, 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 the,
Okay, for the discussion, commissioners? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, emotional care, thank you. Okay, we get into item number nine, appointments committee, commission and authority appointments. The audit committee has two appointments, which are, to replace Mr. Carey for life, whose term expires six thirty two dot eighteen, and with the Lord of London Pierce, her term expires seven months dot eighteen. There's one name submitted, is the Lord of Pierce for life to go reappointment, and also receive a, a request or submittal of Mr. Pamela Bailey, consideration for appointment to audit committee. So we have two names, and we have two individuals who are desiring to be appointed. Carey for life does not desire a reappointment. Commissioner, what's your little bit? Commissioner, what's your little favor?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the two names given. Dolores Pierce and Mr. Pamela Bailey.
Bailey.
All of them.
Second.
And most excited for the appointment of Pamela Bailey to audit committee. And also the reappointment of Mr. Dolores Pierce to our audit committee. Are there further discussion? Yes, Bailey is here, I believe. Miss Pierce is here? Okay. Any further discussion, Mr.? Here in the audit committee, please raise your right hand. All right, most carries, thank you. All right, next appointment is appointment to the board of chairs of the Bannan Zone Affairs Commission. The members of that committee is, I mean, that commission is the last statement, Vice Chair Scott Louz, Charles Dang, Leo Kipps, Jill Wright, and Dolores Harris. Any one of those members here? So has, they've been submitted for a chair? How are you?
Good. The Plenary Affairs Commission has temporarily appointed Mr. Dave Bowers as their chair. But the code actually requires that you all appoint that chair. So that should just be temporary placeholder until you all decide who you would like.
Okay. Mr. Powell's here?
The vice chair does not need to be appointed. By the time you have hours. So but he's to, what do you, he was to you? I believe so, yes.
Commissioner, they have selected individuals from their commission to serve. And it's left up to appointment selection that they have presented to us.
I'm in motion that we approve the appointment of Chair Dave Bowers to Plenary Affairs Commission.
Most excited for the appointment of Mr. Dave Bowers who's a member of the Plenary Affairs Committee Commission to be appointed as the chair of that commission. I have further discussion on it. Here in the audit committee, please raise your right hand. All votes, most carries. Thank you. All right, next appointment is, pardon me, which party?
Party.
That's the mayor's appointment. Harris, Patel. His term expires 7/1/2018. He keeps serving until someone's reappointed. He's reappointed or someone's appointed in place. Mr. McKinnon, his term expires 7/1/2018. His term, he continues to serve until someone appointed. Or he's reappointed. Mr. Ron Stokely, who has resigned, his term being 7/20/2019. Commissioner, I have spoken with both these individuals. And I've spoken to Mr. Patel, I've spoken to McKinnon. But at this time, I want you to appoint for Mr. Ron Stokely's position. Mr. Patel and McKinnon continue to serve until we find someone or either they are reappointed. I'm going to appoint Ms...
Lauren McKinnon?
Lauren McKinnon. As a member, as you all know, she served before she had some personal issues she had to come to, and she resigned. So she was served about the rest of this term here. One of the things I like to do is for people to serve a term and then once, you know, maybe leave a term for someone else to serve in this committee.
So she's going to serve in places like?
Ron Stokely, yes, so he is alone. And Harris Patel and McKinnon continue to serve until they are reappointed.
Was Mr. Patel drawn on to finish an expiry?
He should be.
So he may, it's kind of like, he was appointed. I mean, he was cleaning.
So I may, maybe, I will take that. All right, so Ms. Lauren McKinnon, you're the appointed. All right. Moving along, we're going to take a five minute break. And then we'll continue with our meeting. When we stand, serve five minutes. And we will resume our meeting. We're down now to item number 10. Consider items, item 10, Consider Without Search. Order number 10, the second amendment to Article 23 of City of London's Golden Order Ben Heaven Design Framework. Very dicey, presenting a law without standing.
I'll essentially just start the presentation. There are ordinance updates before your several occasions. The contracts that you're involved in. I obviously helped draft the amendment. It is the beginning portion of the agreement. True contracts exhibit which we concern. If the ordinance you have approved, we adopt it, put those in place.
So you have currently the performance of Art 23 of City Runway. So the London ordinance, the Lynn Ave Design Framework. To give y'all a little bit more, and remind you because you've been here, Ron, and I know the background of this document. This document was, this plan was discussed as far back as 2003 in blueprint Brunswick. It was also in the 2008 blueprint Brunswick 2. And in 2008 comprehensive plan, it was discussed as a community opportunity. That plan specifically talks about preserving views and access to the marshland being essential. And it also talks about the US 17 corridor as a corporate setting for placemaking for the city of Brunswick, that we should be taking advantage of the city's unique marshland views. The city's 2008 and 2013 comprehensive plan updates specifically have these design guidelines, design guidelines in the work program. And then to fast forward to now, I wish, in 2016, City Commission contracted with Denise Varowski, the city announced to launch the Lynn Ave Design Framework Initiative. We had before, citizen participation has been sought out and encouraged throughout this entire study. A three day public charrette was held in May of 2016. And a state leader steering committee was brought in by regularly to discuss comments of Lynn Ave and review the proposed design framework. Once the proposed framework was submitted, the city has held three public hearings before the commission. The commission then directed us to go back to the steering committee and discuss both sides of the comments based on the community input and that additional steering committee meeting. Adjustments have been made to the proposed framework. And we also met with the chamber and discussed the plan with them and helped them understand and to their considerations consideration. I'll ask Denise in just a second to address those and give the additional details. But I also want to point out that I received, you know, 20 big comments from the public in reference to the proposed framework. You have those before you. They were, the majority, the large majority of those comments were positive. And we've been recently discussing the environmental issues at Terry Creek. And Brian actually brought up a good point to me recently that when the EPA is making their plan to correct those environmental issues, Terry Creek is in Lynn Ave corridor. And the adoption of the proposed framework would affect the EPA's plan and should require a higher standard than what is currently allowed by EPA. EPA's current stance on that in 2015 was that this was an industrial area. And obviously, this is not meant to be an industrial area. So that's something we improved. That's what it's worth. So I'm going to pass it over to Denise and let her go over some more details.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. My name is Denise Varowski. I'm the head of the consulting firm that led Tyreclassy Brunswick to develop the Lynn Ave Design Framework. Also working with me on this project was Brian on Design Studio, some of the design firm, Lope and San Antonio. This evening, I'm going to take us back in time a little bit to where we started on this project and how we got to here. And I'll talk in particular about two issues that were the main heart of our discussion at our past couple meetings, including most recent one. And then obviously, happy to answer whatever questions you may have and provide additional information, clarification, whatever is needed. So get started. You know, one of the things that we hear as planners all the time is we go through these planning exercises and these plans just sit on the shelf, right? You've seen that happen before. So we want that to happen here because a lot of work has been done along that avenue before we even came to work for the city. So we looked at the work that had been done previously, including blueprint Brunswick. This is text, if I'm saying correctly, from the blueprint Brunswick plan, which speaks to the importance of three main objectives for the neighborhood to be created. The first is to create, identify public right-of-way easements necessary to provide for circulation services and access to designated areas of use and access, therefore creating a public framework plan. The second is for the regulation that a plan needs to develop requirements. And the third is to establish design guidelines for public improvements on properties, whether implemented by public or private sector entities. So those were the three main goals that we're outlining blueprint Brunswick. If you look, I realize that the plan is very small. The plan back then even showed a pedestrian pathway between the private development and the marshland. In particular, in that public framework plan, which is at first, it was just. It speaks to the public space, including but not limited to a minimum 50-foot setback from the name tied marsh elevation for all streets and impertuse services. That in fact was what was incorporated into the design guidelines initially. Since that time, we've dropped that dimension back based on the feedback from the commission and our stakeholders. The second bullet is the public marsh park park plan, conception location shown on the site diagram. The third bullet is in reference to the Hercules inlet, which Miss Bass just spoke of a moment ago. And the fourth bullet is in regards to the pedestrian circulation, including both street sidewalks and a path trail system extending through the public open space inlet. So again, all of this is taken verbatim from that blueprint Brunswick plan. Also, your comprehensive plan, and this is your comprehensive plan, talking about the character area of the US 17 corridor. Again, this is taken directly from your plan. Preservation views of and access to the marshland is essential. It goes on to say, development on the corridor should be, and it talks about some of the considerations. The final list considerations, the marsh more has one of the dominant features on the corridor. So this has been well established in a number of previous planning efforts dating over quite some time. And we carry this principle forward. Now I'm fast forward to the design charrette, which has been mentioned. The purpose of this design charrette was to create a community vision, to create a vision based on community input that would provide us with where we were trying to go with the development of the framework. So the first step is, let's create that vision. The second step is, let's create the tools to achieve that vision. So that's why I'm going back to the design charrette and how back in 2016. This is the plan that was created as part of that charrette. And you'll see the pause right on the left hand side of the screen. So north is facing to the right. And you can see the Hercules inlet as well as the continuous public access along the marshland. This is a regular that was produced as a part of this charrette. And this shows the potential of what this area could be. This was presented during the charrette itself, as well as that closing presentation, and was extremely well received by the community, by the public as being a reflective vision for what we would like to see happen along Lynn Ave.
I mean, where exactly is that?
Yes, sir, this would be kind of a perspective. If you're looking back from the pause way back towards 17, so kind of. It would be, this is, this is a dog. You see it rendering. So it's kind of looking in this direction. Almost if your bird's eye, sitting on here, looking back at you. There are multiple problems within that area.
You do the problem?
I know that, well, there's the Hercules site. There's, the parcels in that area are not regular. They're not square. So we did not, and I'm glad you brought that question up. When we developed this master plan, we didn't look at parcels. This is based on a community vision for what makes sense for the community as a whole. So parcels are artificial constraints that change all the time based on land ownership. So we based it on the input that we heard from the community, the work that's been done in the past, and not trying to artificially create the development around parcel lines which change frequently. So again, if you look at the little red dot. That will, I'm sorry. That little, that is intended to be a fishing theater or something of that effect. And in rendering, that's that same fishing theater. And one of the things, because this came up first, you know, well, couldn't there be a private restaurant with a dock, kind of, you know, not dissimilar to what you have right now? And the short answer, short answer is no, cannot. You cannot permit a dock for a restaurant. The only way you can get a permit for marsh construction is if it is a water-based activity. And even those are becoming more and more difficult. But you all would view there's a more likely, increased likelihood of getting a marsh permit for public access than for private access. And that's what it's really, this rigor shows is intending to use, to have this area as a resource and an amenity for the entire community of Brunswick, not privatized as often happens. And really, you know, there are communities across the country that have recognized the importance and the value of their waterfront as a community asset and as a tremendous economic development tool. And so the framework that is before you tonight, although it doesn't, because this is a development framework, development of the private properties, it doesn't go into, you know, how this public access walkway can be developed because that's really outside the purview of the land ownership. Having to speak to that, how the nature can happen. But what it does is it preserves the potential for that to even happen. Because to have a great waterfront, you have to start with a great vision. And you have to make sure you have the tools that can make that vision happen. So I just want to take a few minutes. And this is another image from the charrette that was produced. The bottom image is a cross section of the proposed roadway type that could occur along the marsh. There is a path on each side of the roadway. What we have proposed within the design framework would not be a wide enough right of way to accommodate an entire roadway. We've simply preserved enough. We've simply preserved enough of an area so that there could potentially one day be a multipurpose path along your marsh front. So potential, what could be? This is River Street back in the seventies. It was a wasteland, right? It took vision to turn it into what it is today. And I don't think anyone would disagree that the investments made on River Street have been a tremendous economic development tool in the city of San Antonio. Even looking forward, River Street for the future has been extended as part of an agreement within private development. So this is looking from the current River Street to the east. The area that you see to, so you can see Savannah River on the left. You can see the extension of the River Walk, which was a public investment alongside private property. So the private property was one time while I was going to be in Savannah, Orlando, that my bankrupt dismount note is in redevelopment as we speak. But the importance of showing this image is, the first thing that had to happen for this to be possible is the continuation without a break of that public access along the waterfront. And that's exactly what's happened here, to be able to extend that as development continues to occur along the river.
Denise?
Yes?
How wide is that actual boardwalk? If they continue the target tell?
That is the same width as the existing walkway along River Street today, which I would estimate is probably at least thirty feet. It's wide. It's wide. It's quite wide, isn't it? This is Beaufort, another well-known waterfront park, coastal city. This is the Battery in Charleston, some of the most expensive homes in Charleston. And what's in front of those homes is a public walkway. Now, granted, the Battery was developed quite some time ago. It was developed in a time and age when the public realm spoke to the whole community. So the public realm was of the greatest importance because it represents the quality of all of this community. So rather than privatizing this view and this asset, the Battery is now a public resource because of the public access. This is in Greenville, South Carolina. The Reedy River was an industrial wasteland. No one wanted anything to do with it. Their losses centered with the Reedy River. Today, it is the shining star of the city of Greenville. This image is actually taken from, you can't see the signing as well, but taken from a website for a real estate company. So the real estate company is selling the image of Greenville as the market or properties because of the added value of this public asset. This is a development in Mount Pleasant, known as IHOP. And what you see here, the marsh is to the right. There is a walking path that's in the center of the screen, and to the left is a private residence. This is a walking path that is open to the public, goes behind individual, expensive private homes along the marsh in order to provide an asset and a marshfront walkway to anyone in the community, not just those who are there, right there along the marsh. This is another image of that same pathway. This is something that was installed voluntarily by the developer because they saw the value of having this asset available to everyone in the community and not only those who bought a marshfront lot. So you can see it has areas for people to sit. This is not a private space, this is a public walkway. It's very intimate, it's very well-designed. But this couldn't happen if there wasn't an opportunity for that access to occur along the marsh. So that's one potential. What's another one? It's easy to think that anybody with marshfront property is going to recognize the value of that marshfront property and to preserve those views. But unfortunately, that's not always the case. This is behind that dumpster enclosure. The, what you're seeing right here is a dumpster enclosure, that fence is around the dumpster. Just on the other side of that is the marsh. This is the Popeyes on 341 that was just recently redeveloped by a corporate entity that has headquarters somewhere else. They're not local citizens of the community. And it was more important to be in this location on 341, ARI-95, than to recognize their location next to the marsh. So on the south side of 341, you see the Popeyes, that's actually before it was redeveloped, there it was a little older. And on the north side, you see the top of the bell, the exact same thing. So there you have two properties that are marshfront properties that completely turn back on the marsh and totally eliminate any opportunity for access to that public resource. What's another square? What's that?
Well, you can change your stance or something.
Yeah, okay, that's something you would think, that they would be like, wow, you can do something, no, they're stealing them. So that's, and that's really, you know, it would be great if we could have development regulations that were very light, said this is what we want to do, go forth and do. Unfortunately, that's not the way it works. We have to have development regulations that speak to a developer or an entity that is not of this place, that doesn't have the same values that this community has, and make sure that the land development regulations reflect the values of the community. And so that's what we've done here. So this is the town of Thunderbolt, Thunderbolt, Georgia, just outside of Savannah, historically an old fishing village. So very much part of the water. What you're looking at here is the Waterington River, which is part of the intercoastal waterway. They have a beautiful sidewalk along, this is River Drive. So the sidewalk is right on that edge of the screen, right on right-hand side, you can see the street lamp, and the edge of the sidewalk, overlooking the river. This is looking, so here you see the sidewalk, just mentioned, the river is just off the screen to the left, and then across the street are condominiums that were built quite some time ago. Now, as you move down River Drive, did you change from the sidewalk? This is what you encounter. The community is completely cut off from the waterfront because the property between the public access and the waterfront has been 100% privatized. This is the only view that remains as you continue along your walk until you get to a small public park. Now, when you look at this, I can't fit the whole extent of the, of the river in the area, but this is the first area that we looked at, and you've got the public walkway right along the roadside with continuous view and access to the marsh. As you move down to the second image that I showed, you can see the three condominium buildings that have been constructed. And their development goes all the way to the water's edge with no access for the community at all. The little tiny green strip of, go to sugar green, you see, that's the town's park, so it's a community park. But you can't get to the community park from the waterfront. You can only get there from the roadway. And right across from that community park is their town hall. And then as you continue down, you have a large corrida, again, with no public access. The potential here could have been, at least, it didn't have to have a negative impact on any of this development that happened. There was a potential here to at least continue that public access, and that's something that town leaders continue to do today, is this loss of opportunity because their entire section of waterfront was privatized, and they will never get that opportunity back unless they spend enough of money, which for a small community is not something they're rarely likely to do. So that potential was lost because the opportunity was never preserved. So that's a little bit of a recap about how we got to here. So now we're going to focus on the two main areas that we discussed last time, which are the twenty-foot marsh setback and building heights. Currently, most of the properties along this area are done either highway commercial or basic industrial. So what you're looking at here are typical lots and what current setback requirements are for each of those seven districts. So if you think of the dark orange of a lot and the lighter orange as your area for your development footprint, that's what you're looking at here. So for highway commercial, there's a twenty-five-foot front setback and a fifteen-foot rear setback. The side setback varies based on a number of conditions, and it goes from zero to ten or twenty to eighty. The side setbacks are proposed, and the side setbacks that you currently have in highway commercial or not, that's a difference, so there wasn't, there wasn't much of a change to show here. For industrial, there's a thirty-foot setback on the front, on the sides, real adjacent to a different setting district, whichever property is basic industrial along Highway 17 is. So the thirty-foot setback would apply on the sides as well as the back. So if you look at the current requirements for your setting, the front setback plus to rear setback for highway commercial is forty feet. For basic industrial, it's sixty feet. Now, within the design guideline framework, there are two alternatives for development. One is for, if you are directly adjacent to Lynn Avenue, and that's categorized as a twenty-foot front setback and a five-foot rear setback, for a total of twenty-five feet. So current highway commercial, there's a total of forty feet in front and rear setback, what we're proposing is a total of twenty-five feet, or a fifteen-foot gain back into the development area for those properties. For the properties that utilize the Main Street standards, and any property within the framework can utilize the Main Street standards. The only properties that can utilize the Lynn Avenue standards are those that are directly adjacent to Lynn Avenue. But the Main Street standards, if you'll remember, are more of an urban form. They allow for higher building heights and closer setbacks, so it's a more pedestrian-oriented style of development. So for that, those are the choices. The front setback is sixty to twelve feet, so a six-foot minimum, twelve-foot maximum. And the rear setback is three feet, so for a total of nine feet in your front and your rear setback. So for our highway commercial, forty feet or sixty feet for basic industrial, now, oops, excuse me, nine feet. So a significant amount of developable area is returned back to those properties in their development footprint under the proposed standards. Is that helpful? I know it's, it's a lot of numbers, but it sometimes is beneficial to look at what's, what are we doing now and what are we proposing? And, you know, these are the things that we need to look at and what we're changing, right? So the other thing that you asked us to look at was the building height. At the last meeting, we had added the provision for bonus heights based on your request by the City Commission. And that was incorporated in two ways. The first was with a roof level. So this is a partial floor that is setback at least ten feet from the front of the building. So the street scape remains, so it still looks like it's through lower-scale buildings, but you actually have additional floors, just setback, only ten feet. The other option is to do a tower. And the guidelines allow for you to do both, so you can have a tower plus partial floor. Based on the feedback that we have received, we have also added in the potential for a full additional bonus floor for properties of one acre or more, meaning that if you have an acre of property or more and your development proposal exceeds the minimum requirements in the design guidelines, you may receive, based on the approval of the City Commission, up to one additional full floor plus the partial, the roof level and/or a tower. So significant changes have been made to accommodate additional height based on the approval of the City Commission.
So what's the minimum height? What's the maximum?
So we still, we still have, all of our heights are expressed in stories as opposed to feet, because what we want to do is encourage visual differentiation, just like you have in downtown Brunswick. So it would be your, whatever your city height limit is, which I believe is sixty feet.
Sixty feet right now, yeah.
Yes, sir. So if you want to put it, there's not enough that's specified in this document because it's tied to a number of stories as opposed to feet.
So we have tall floors, whatever, then you can go, then it goes up to, what, ninety?
Well, sixty feet is your limit today, yes, sir.
There's three floors.
So if you had, if you had four floors plus a bonus roof level, on approval of the City Commission, then that would be allowed under the guidelines, under the standards.
What if someone felt embarrassed to go higher than that, up sixty feet, and that's enough to do that, yes?
Yes, sir. As long as it's four full floors and as long as it's no more than four full floors plus a partial foot floor.
Well, that's enough for amendment to orders and various.
Yes, absolutely. And orders can be amended, as you all know, at your discretion, yes?
Well, that is why I'm sure that so we have some.
Freeway, what happened?
How is Freeway getting fixed? Where I'm coming from with that is, if you already got concrete in place back there, you've got two buildings that are six stories back there. So, and there's nothing, you're there, I mean, why do you want to live at this? In the whole city of Charlotte, Georgia, you can't look at the square footage, you have to look at the cubic footage. And it's going to be more vital to look at it that way in the future than it is, it has ever been before, right now, when we sit here. The things that we actually build more of, just for what you said.
Yes, sir. And so we added the provision, so then if you go higher, and this is at your discretion, to set that at whatever you believe is appropriate. What we discussed, it says that initial recommendations were based on the scale that's appropriate for Brunswick. We also wanted to have something that was not going to compete with downtown, so not to take from your potential market of downtown, but be something that would be complementary to downtown. And also have something that would be human-scale, that would be walkable, and not create, you know, a wall along your waterfront that then limits the access to those views, which we started discussing at the discussion in the beginning of the evening. So what we tried to do is strike a balance between the vision that we started with, the feedback that we've heard through this process, and the suggestion we've ended and what's before you tonight.
But the tower on there, what does that do for you or the group?
It gives you additional height. And it's a way to add additional height and provide more bonus for the property owner or the building owner without having it be a large model of, of building height. It breaks that dimension of the height I had that tower on my time. And this is, this is really the conclusion of what I have prepared in the presentation because those were the two issues that we really focused on last time. And especially given the slate out of the laborary points, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have or discuss anything you need in more detail if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, excuse me. If you can see, we have some, some issues with things. I was, I wanted to say, Chris knows me too. I notice you said a couple of things about Popeyes or something that didn't appeal to the public. And those issues, those were in our county. I realize we have no jurisdiction over how we're accounting, but you make the point that, that those property owners didn't really care about the marsh.
Yes, sir.
To me, I see a problem with that, right? And I agree with you that we need to have some type of public access, but I do, we do not like, some of, they're like, for, have to get with the property owners and have them get involved with allowing some of these things to happen.
Yes, sir.
I believe that, you know, there's a balance there somewhere.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And while I would like to have people have view of the marsh, you know, but I guess a lot of persons would say, well, why did anybody park this and walk property? I understand that, but I think there's a balance there somewhere. Also, as that communication stated about, we have St. Mark's Tower, which has six floors that's sitting out there overlooking the marsh as well, and to restrict other property owners from property development doing that seems to be something that we, to me, should not do, we should have a duty to be able to do that at once. But that's just my opinion about that. Also, you may mention a walkway, a riverwalk, a marsh, I guess would be. What about, just, if we don't make a little walk here of a very rough part, we can't go, can't go south because of Jordan Porter, and we can't go north because of private What's the difference between that and coming over to 17? Like, what's the difference?
The difference is that this is an order that you are targeting redevelopment. And you have the opportunity to, in that redevelopment process, to preserve that access. The current, would you like to have more access north and south of Marinos? Sure you would, right? But that opportunity is lost.
It's wrong for us to have redevelopment.
Yes. And unless that property redevelops, which is probably what can happen anytime soon, if it does, if you put development guidelines in place like this now for that area, you have that opportunity again. But you only get that opportunity very rarely. You can go back and reclaim that opportunity, but at a very significant expense, and it's such expense that it doesn't make sense. Jurisdictions reserve right away, all the time, whether it's the state EMT, the US EMT, your local government, if you need a drainage easement, you ask the property owner for acid development property. We need a drainage easement through this property to sustain our drainage system. What we're saying here is we need to preserve the opportunity for that public framework to develop over time at the investment of the public sector. But if that opportunity is lost, you can't get it back. But if you have that opportunity there, the East Coast Greenway Trail runs along US 17, all the way from Florida to Maine. They just submitted a $100 million grant to the US Department of Transportation to build off-road trail facilities throughout that region, including here in Georgia. Opportunities like that go to places where the opportunities aren't easy to grab, not to the places where the expense is economically higher because the properties aren't being developed or there's not a way of its own place. So it's really, it's really just up to you. If this is the vision and you think it's appropriate, this is the way to do it. If this is not your vision, then you don't have to. It's really just a decision, and if that's the thing, it really honestly is, that's what it comes down to.
Okay. Mr. Neeb?
It was actually supposed to be earlier, but because of schedule, so the summer, this was the first thing we came back with.
So would it happen if this party, this party come together at some, whether it were meeting, that we asked to be built, and that ever builds?
I agree with you, but if that ever builds.
We did meet with cheaper and several stakeholders at that meeting, and we also held open the public comment period, and that was the direction that we got.
No, it wasn't either. The residents came to watch, they took the property owners out there, and they looked out there, and that's cool, but I was thinking to add on the original fact.
And as I know, this City Commission's aggression once said it was good for the stakeholders to convene, which primarily all property owners along the corridor who wanted to be involved. We called them all back to the board that you all have made a commitment to. And they were asked, I believe, gentlemen had concerns, were going to make a presentation in the member of the committee, we made a presentation and those ideas were considered. Can you bring your hand up?
Yes. And add, you know, these ideas that we have discussed several times, and the majority of the stakeholders that have been part of this process concur with what's included in here. I understand that the atoms do not. And I will say that having worked in this field for over 20 years, to have an ordinance like this that affects many, many property owners, to only have one property owner speak out in opposition is quite a feat.
Quite a bit.
Is accomplishing a lot, because this is a building consensus, and you will never get 100% agreement from everyone on every detail. And I understand that they may not be 100% on board with what's included in this document, but the majority of those that have been very actively involved in this process from the beginning, they are.
That's fine, but what do you put, and to my recognition too, we wanted the two to get together to resolve the issue, and we really did. Now, also, and I know you, so you talked to the chamber, and I know you did give a brief with the chamber, and I think you incorporate some of their comments, whatever, in there. But I don't know whether you got, you returned back to the chamber, saying, this is what we got, this is everything they had. I mean, I know you incorporated, but I don't know whether you got back to them, said that this is what we put together.
We did reconvene the steering commission, and that was, again, that two-year process of those folks that you all appointed.
Which, right.
The stakeholder committee.
Yeah, maybe a board.
The stakeholder committee. We did reconvene that.
And it was really the chamber who was facilitating, bringing some of those together, the local real estate association and stakeholders. I don't think there was a directive for that whole group to reconvene again, but that the directive was for conversations to continue to happen.
That's fine. I was at the chamber meeting this morning, and the senses that I got from them, that they are not so pleased or ready to move forward. I don't know who, as a board, they have some issues related to me. So that's why I should get right back with them to, they follow the meeting, or follow them together, and this is what we have, everybody, this is what we are. That's all I mean by that. You don't have to do that, you have to do that, I'm just saying, but it didn't happen. It does seem, now, they have some issues. The steering committee that we put together, that's fine, and, Mr. Neeb, as you said about only one person having someone call about that, we would like for, why would I like for, for that one person to at least have an opportunity to compromise with that one person. That's just my, I really want, like, that to happen, because it affects that one person more than it affects all the others who are, maybe are not stakeholders in that design overlay.
Well, Mr. Neeb, I got, I got a call from the chamber, well, they stated the same thing that you just said, that they were in opposition, all moving forward at the time. I asked a question, did you have a meeting, and is it a goal, that they didn't think they've done, effectively have done to whatever satisfaction they were trying to get to. I said, you know, I was in too late. Presentation, you go for that, when I told you, when I'm talking about. And then I'm going to drive back to the law.
I think the plan overall, but it has some issues that I would like to move forward, and maybe strike out those issues that we have, and come back and address those issues later, and always put those issues back in where we can versus to make it complete and then we strike out, I'd rather to be inserted and strike out. So, but, Commissioner, we have, and please, thank you for giving the update and your presentation very well. We personally, I personally have not gone through the whole ordinance and in detail, that's what we, our staff do, they could tell something out of order, something dispelled, something, and it may be a few issues there somewhere, but hopefully it does not change the overall context of the orders. Now, Mr. City Attorney, we went back and forth with some orders that we was trying to get, we maybe changed that how many times?
Both.
Right, because we want to make sure we get it right. So we may be at this juncture at the same, in the same place.
I would remind the commission that this is the ordinance that was protecting the oak trees that we were.
I'm taking the tree order.
And also the EPA.
And also, we have the EPA public comment period planned on September 30th, and now with Terry Creek issue, that is one of the points that the EPA pushed back on, just to remind you, so that we might bring it back in September for the public comments, we have a joint meeting on August 21st about Terry Creek.
It was September, I heard something about September.
It's been the public comment period for the Terry Creek consent period, extended until September 30th, but the joint meeting with the city, county, EPA, will be on August 21st.
I mean, I would think that if there are property owners that have acreage, in unlikely way, with no redevelopment occurred over however many years of ownership, the best opportunity would be to sell the land to a developer who's then going to take over that same region and be thankful that there is the opportunity to have that public access to the water and the amenity that it offers and the value that it offers to that developer. So to me, if we kind of vote off despite our face because of potential disruptance or however you want to call it, to me, it's a bonus. I mean, I don't see a development plan coming before us at this point saying, we don't want the horizontal pathway, we don't want anything horizontal that would preserve the view and the access to the waterfront. So I think we need to refer back to the process we've been through, and if we let go of this, I don't want to end up several years down the road, let me put it on the positive side. I would rather in 10, 15 years down the road, your comments from our citizens that say, thank goodness, y'all made the decision when you did to preserve, to have that opportunity, not the demand, but the opportunity to have that waterfront available for.
And we have made several concessions based on feedback that we've gotten through this process, and I'm happy to have Denise come up and talk to you more about those, what changes we've made already in this document, based on those.
Based on the comments that I believe Mr. had in the committee, you had the initial board.
Yes.
That was over three acres.
And this is what is St. Mark's Tower is currently. I don't know positively, but I would guess that each floor is 8 feet. If you do a larger height development, with four floors, plus your additional pump out on the top, at 12 stories apiece, you're at 60 feet. It's the same, not true. It's just adding to that development.
And there's 60 feet up there, six floors, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think the amendment tonight, you might prepare, you can prepare with the acreage, I mean, there's very few large pieces, you can say over 10 acres, you could have an additional permit or something.
And another concern was the special districts, is that what they're called? The special districts are not being pulled out of the plan and saying, they can do whatever they want, they're quite the opposite, they're saying, this is a parcel that needs some special attention. For example, Pinot, if Pinot gets to be developed, it needs a master plan in that line, it just, you ask what only thing might work there, it needs a master plan, the developer to say, okay, this is how we're going to design it. And that's actually based on a comprehensive plan as well.
Right, he also mentioned about the WSC loans and this office street, a street in between there and there being considered, particularly this overlay.
It's voluntary, you don't have to give your land across the front, you're the holdout, you can say, I don't want to give my land, but you don't get the extra stories, you're getting a lot of extra square footage and space if you really need it.
The question, why are they in the overlay? That's the question.
Properties that are beyond the way that border are looking at, could be looking at the back of a development. So it makes sense for us to cross a street in order to say, rather than looking at the back of the development, this is a house, there is a bar, we're kind of integrating that whole neighborhood into the plan. Now, that doesn't mean that we're saying individual houses or any properties that are developed right now need to tear down and change, that is not the proposal at all. You can continue to do what you are doing, but if you are doing something new, we've got a plan for that.
From my understanding, very likely, is that you would make, you have businesses that are built on 17, and you're looking at the back of the dumpster. And so now, if you're taking into consideration a house across the street and development as part of the district, you're looking at a holistic plan instead of just zeroing in a pop, whatever the business might be, I'm looking at the whole area.
The issue is, are you restricting that, that house that's maybe living there in the dumpster, or are you restricting what that house can do because of being in the overlay district?
No, I mean, only the house is already constructed, the overlay, if they try to redevelopment as an industry or a residential commercial. There's an issue, there are many rules. The potential that a certain street might make a street become a commercial, and this would allow us to consider how these commercial houses could, in fact, be made in expanding Very likely, houses around the border streets could grow offices and other uses.
It's a protection for those neighborhoods that are behind.
That's really those for those, protect the business.
Protection, but, you know, if they're protected, that might be, you could put restriction on, you mean, restriction on the house itself, not necessarily, you know, you could put restriction on frontage, I see that, but how, how, you make the deal be here to the same as the frontage?
Yes, sir. Again, this is a redevelopment strategy, so this is, and I'm sure you've seen it in a meeting before, where you have areas that used to be residential, that then transitioned to office or commercial. So this strategy provides a framework for that, to that redevelopment to happen in a way that protects the neighborhood behind it and to make sure that redevelopment is orderly and transitions appropriately to the neighborhood.
Denise, let me give you a scenario. Let's say there's a big, I don't think it's a, it could be a house firm. So let's say tomorrow is the final of the house, the last estate, for four years now, all the rent, all the rent is lost, someone wants to build, what would this ordinance do to the construction of a new house to replace the one? What would this ordinance do to the construction of a new house to replace the one?
It's, the zoning is still residential. So, and that's not, and that's not, for me, this is an overlay district, so your base is the same. So as long as it's based residential, they can do what they've always done, be a residential house.
We know it is.
Right, so, but if they reschedule to commercial or some other more intensive use than a single family residential is there now, they're then added back, they're added into this overlay district in order to promote that orderly development.
So if they change, it protects, the purpose of which protects that single family home from having the backend of a commercial property that then totally devalues your property.
Yes, ma'am. And that's what you have right now, you have properties along, especially on the western side of 17th. You have properties that are neglected because they are looking at the backs of the sewers or dumpsters or other, you know, just undesirable uses. And that's the type we want to try and avoid. And so that's why the, the district carries across the street. I know it seems, it's, and this is one of those, it's a detail, but it's a really important detail. It often gets lost because a lot of times your zoning districts will change in the street and that's not where you want it to change. You want your zoning districts and your uses to change again across the backs of properties. So the properties that face one another are torn from their own tone. And that's all.
Question to your honor. If this plan would save trees down in Manhattan, why weren't the trees saved? You know, I was told while working on this, you know, the people that talked that plan out there knew of this plan and they lived the life, yet we still lost a tree. And I'll say something, you know, I have read this plan and I've read it over and I've read it again too. And I've read it again another time. You've got a building sitting out there praying, thanking you, it might be a problem too. I would, I'm not planning. I'm just a stupid guy, I don't know a lot of people and planning isn't my thing. It really, really isn't. And I just, but that building out there for some stuff, I read here, not the plan. And they tell you about your fronts and they tell you about your sides. And if you could tell me that place facing south and you got, I would have a deed out there. If east and west, huh?
Until this is law, until, until this is adopted, nobody has to do anything in here until you say they do. That's why you lost the real fact that you're telling.
But I was a little bit way more aware of the plan.
I'm sure you have internal things that worth it to have.
I was, I was born to get that turn for four times, those are the main things in regards to, and out of those. People were aware of the plan and they were willing to do it. I thought, maybe if you want, I think we're, we're just a way of, a way of.
We didn't give that in the plan. And there are a couple of things as far as trees. Honestly, a tree ordinance needs to be enacted and reorganized.
This, this, this area will bring any tree, it's gonna be.
In addition to that, this does account for replacement trees and it also accounts for size of trees and type and canopy trees. So that is one of the priorities of this.
And you're gonna get a point with trees, those little trees out there. But, but again, it also says permits were supposed to have been requested and applied for too. I never asked, I, was there permit? From the city.
There's the permit process in the city code. And I'm just someone to take away with the whole process.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not sure the people that bought that land out there.
Were willing to provide the code, we had that happen.
Yeah.
And they were willing to do it, it still cost them money. They were not required by law or law, they could bring them to turn.
Okay, that's why I've got the problem right there is that I was told something really and truly this is a problem I had with. And I wasn't asked, hey, after I asked a question, perhaps somebody should have said, hey, let's get away from Johnny Casey, let's get rid of Casey. These people want to cut those trees out there. That never happened.
Unless I have a ordinance to enforce, I can't enforce it.
You can let people know you can't. And the next thing I had to do is that I was told that if people had to cut the trees and caused they had to comply with the FEMA zoning regulations too. I was given that as another reason for the tree to act. What is this gonna do for that? What, what is it gonna do? I mean, if the next people come on the other side of that lot, they're gonna have to do it the same way that these people did. So how are we gonna save these trees out there? I'm not willing to.
There are various strategies that can be used, for elevation, filling the lot is one, elevating your building is another. So there's, there are options available. But again, unless it is law and unless it's required, it's at the will of the developer and they may or may not do it. And they may have intentions of doing it, but then they're, I mean, it says, no, I'm not gonna support that because I want you to do it as cheaply as you possibly can. And if you're not required to do it, I'm gonna pay for it. So unless it is a requirement, you will have no guarantees and no assurances.
My, I don't know, here, I don't know, why did I ask a question? If I was gonna be told something and then I wanted to go and get something back, you know, the thing changed and where. And that's my little fault. I mean, I felt a problem, you know, with where we are right now. I think it shows that we don't have what we need in place to do this. I really don't. I just, I just laugh, don't, don't see it. I've, I've got problems with height, I've got problems with trees, I've got problems with signs. You've got established markers out there already. I haven't said one thing about the back out there, but I knew this was, how many stories is that? I mean, it's up there already. This is an industrial, commercial, what is it?
Is that what we wanted to say though?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that this document has a lot of purpose to go in than where we are right now. No, I think we need a plan. I, I believe that. Perhaps when we snow it off on this project, I thought there could be some other ways to do things that probably would be safely. Establish something like what we've done right here. But now where we are, we don't need a plan. But I don't, I wasn't ready for this to be that, this to end. I have questions for you. I didn't thought that here. I'm more like the ladies that came before us last week that turned around after they went to cheer. And who will see it? And they came back and I said, we come for you and we never get any information. And I've sit here, I'm in the same boat you're in, ladies. I don't get any information, you know? I'm against what I say, I read this, I know what it is. And I don't get the information back. So this is our opportunity to get this. I, I don't, I don't harbor any, any thing against this plan. I said, there's nothing like that, believe me, it's not, we gotta have a plan. I just gotta do this process. And that quarter out there has been out there for a long, long time. And, and I just want to talk to my people.
Thank you, Commissioner Casey, for the comments. I want to say this, that we, uh, Denise, I really appreciate it, like, you put up some of this with us. Commission, one super problem did not exactly all of the ins and outs. Uh, thank you to, uh, Grant as well, because, you know, we need to get those things, we need to get those things fashioned out here too as well. So it may be who us as a commission will see, one-on-one, two-on-two, whatever, to actually go through and get a real good understanding of what, what it will exactly do for us and all the ins and outs. So you just play the issues that we have, you explain the issues so we can get the issue resolved for ourselves. Meanwhile, also with that is that too, uh, adults have to have an issue. And that issue seems to be growing up in our community. So to try to solve that issue, it may not be, it may not be solved, but somehow there's some kind of balance somewhere. And the adult may not, may not get what they really want. But they can get something to know that it was, it wasn't in person, we are good taking another advice. And even if you say, well, this is it, you're not going that route, you know, you have to suck it up. But we think it's an opportunity to know that they had an opportunity to try to negotiate or to try to resolve issue that they, that they had. So I don't mean to keep this thing off, but it seems that, you know, we are in past that, and this is a good plan for us to score our future of what's to happen to our citizens. But we still have some small issues that we need to iron out. And I, I feel that we need to be able to iron every issue out. Uh, commissioners, uh, there's a couple individuals like to speak. Is that okay with you guys, let us speak or? Okay, I give a three minutes. Mr. Don Dowd. I'm sorry. Yes.
I don't think it feels to adults to have resentment and have a need and have this opportunity to say that people, I really don't. And I think here, the man right here is explaining the same thing. Who's the boss here?
I am, and it, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, I need to talk to you. I know it's not a public hearing. There's a couple of things that just, and I wasn't prepared to even mention tonight, but fortunately for the presentation, this has been going on since 2003. And with the exception of one building, nothing's been done. And I submit to you, what that builder, or what that developer did was egregious, putting down those trees. This does not need to be adopted to protect those kind of trees, the tree ordinance. And I think she spoke to her. That would have surprised, and yes, there's, there's issues because of the radius and I say this respectfully, the county is beating to death tree ordinance. And it may be something that the city would take and, and I, I pray you can judge it, but at least consider it. I'm a stakeholder and I have to tell you, but for this article, I had no idea, none, that this was at this stage, none. And when I saw this, I thought this was, I didn't know where it was. I thought, you know, it was involved in development in general. And let me tell you, this is a beautiful picture. You're, you're catering to people coming off of state silence because if you go down Highway 17, you don't see this. If you want to see this on Highway 17, build it at Overlook Park. Everyone will see it. They'll see the fishing dock, they'll see the, 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 the park back or the, the trails and everything. You have it within your means and control to do something like that.
One minute, sir.
Pardon me?
Yeah, one minute left.
Mayor, I ask your indulgence, I'm gonna run through it. I'm gonna say this today, I'm a piece of property. I have spoken to people all over the country. In fact, I'm gonna meet with someone Friday morning. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no interest at any price. I've spoken to people, the only people that have an interest in the end of that property, and I speak for a lot of the property over there because I've been provided that, that what they want to do, if this were approved, that small market is just gonna disappear. There, right now, the biggest selling point that I'm at, and I say this respectfully, is that this property is in the city of Brunswick. And I say this respectfully, Mr. County Commissioner, and not in Glen County. You can go six floors, you can prove Liberty Harbor, there's 22 floors there. I'm telling you, I represent my property in the property along there as though it's a blank piece of canvas. Use your creativity, the city will work with you. No one's interested. This is going to do nothing to enhance it. The dialysis center, I'm telling you, I think you need to, I'm gonna skip over that. The three largest commercial real estate agents in Glen County have property on Highway 17 listed, all three of them. You've got a vacant, you've got established property, you've got my property, I am. Mayor, I, I apologize, I sat here, I'm a stakeholder and I hear everyone telling me all the good things that can be done. And, and I'm telling you, the best thing that can be done is I sell my property and someone come over there and go to the city and say, we want to do something. This will not enhance it. Right now, I'm gonna say, I have hired, my last time, I've hired a professional plan to take my property and the entire block and do a, a conceptual of my property back to the river and that whole block, including the, the trailer block. And because people that I'm talking to, and I don't want to say the comments, but I need to give them something they can bite their teeth into. If I am limited to this, I've lost the voice and then I've lost the audience. I just ask you now, if you would, this needs to be put on the table and let the economy pick up and help us.
Thank you, sir, thank you. I've indulged you quite a bit here. Now, does anybody else say something? Oh, you said something, I'll wait.
I would like to have conversations with Mr. Kravowski directly and with the city manager directly, and the city attorney directly, and get Mr. Stimper in the meeting and my brother in the meeting. I, I'd like to get the people whose property is really going to be affected in a big way and get them in the room at the same time. The, the plan Mr. Kravowski talked you all about, the plan I read about in this, in this document, the outcomes are different.
Sir, I, 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 uh.
Either, I don't understand.
That's fine, if you want.
I understand. I made that place, place meetings, that's why I thought.
All right, that's fine, I understand. Mr. uh, Doug Dowd?
I don't know.
Okay, anybody else?
Can we meet with you and then, Your Honor? Because it saves lives for this matter. I, I'd like to sit with the commission and the staff.
Okay, so you, you make the comment. The comment's, uh, I think well taken. Uh, Commissioner, did you comment for?
That's right, I was not intending to.
I was gonna give your name yet.
Sorry, Alex Merriman, Anthony Sherman Street. I'll make it quick though, it's not, I'm giving any comments. But I would just like to say, in the work I've done in Brunswick, since I moved here in January, I have spoken to many residents throughout Brunswick. And I worked for 100 miles, we had an event in April where we met with 200 residents running in Glen County and Brunswick. And in preparation for that event, and including the event, we reached 500 residents. And access to the waterfront was one of the top five priorities that surfaced out of the conversations that we had over that four-day event. Um, I think that Denise's comments tonight made a point that are very clear. This is an opportunity. It's not requiring anyone to do anything, but it's leaving that opportunity open for the future. Just this week, we have been looking at property along the west side of the peninsula and there was based on property that's vacant right now, looking on it. Um, it was owned by the bank and we were at one of those looking at the potential to develop that, or not personally, but work with groups to talk about what it could be, develop some ideas of what it could be to have access to the waterfront. And that property was purchased by an industrial company and therefore the opportunity was lost. Um, obviously, those respective plans, we did not have any concrete plans in place. That's not the kind of work we do at 100 miles. However, we don't want to see opportunities lost. And I think that that is a clear example of you can be working on something, whether it be for two months that we have been looking at that property and trying to think of what it could be, or it could be since 2003 or 2016. But all of this work will go to waste if we don't act now. And I would hate to see that opportunity go to waste as both a resident and someone who works here in Brunswick.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, and I think we've heard quite a bit, uh, Commissioners, and we've heard some recommendations, recommendations by our, uh, I think the recommendation by our, uh, Planning Director, also uh, Sabiasky, uh, Denise. Kowalski. Okay, uh, you have a question, you got a question?
Yes, and I sit and I listen at everybody, I listen at both sides, and, um, and, and I take into consideration both sides of the time. Um, what I also take into consideration is overall a benefit that whatever happens is going to happen to the city. And I listen at the property owners, um, and I take into consideration your positions. But I look back fifteen years ago, I look back twenty years ago, and the conditions of properties are still in the conditions they were in fifteen or twenty years ago. So, that's what I bring to the forefront, is now we're at the point of trying to come to some type of meeting to do something. I listen at, and I forget your name.
John Dowd.
Mr. Dowd's commented that there is nobody that wants to do anything. Well, if I was a developer and I came, and I think that condition that that property is in now, and it's still in the same condition that it was ten, twenty years ago, I don't know if I would want to do anything with it either. Um, but now we're at this table, that we're trying to invite all of you all to this table to sit down with us and make some type of meaningful plans that will benefit everybody. I can hear people say that they don't want to look at the condition, there is no change. We were experiencing the same thing with downtown Brunswick, twenty, thirty years of no development, no new plans, no new action for anything to happen, and this commission has brought to this table, to the forefront, things that were not afforded to you before. So what we're saying here is point out the things that you have a problem with, or you have a, a, you have some type of situation or issue with, or bring a resolution. We're, we've been back and forth on this single thing for how long now? How long we been there with this?
Two thousand and four.
It's been a long time. Everybody is still bringing the same issues and concern, let's bring some resolution. Let's get with the Adamses, they're not the only property owners, but they're major property owners. Uh, Mr. Dowd was a property owner, he was saying he can't get the, I wouldn't want to put it up next to all the trailers at Highway seventeen either, so I'm sure that that is not the only reason. So when we're talking about things, and we're talking about development, let's bring in all of the factors, every, every factor, as somebody who can't get that property is not their problem in. So let's, let's bring all of the factors in, okay? So we all know why they won't, and what will cause them to. And so now we've got our, our planners, we've got our, our economic development department, our planning department, ready, engaged, and ready to do something. Bring the resolution in. I can't understand what's the big problem why y'all didn't came together already? This stuff to me should have been resolved already. This should have been resolved. There is no reason that you all should not have come together by now to have it resolved. So when we was up here tonight, we should have been ready to go, we said, let's move on with this thing. John Dowd, I'm sorry, Commissioner Casey talked about the trees, well, the trees couldn't be protected because what's in their place wasn't being protected. So now we learn from that, Commissioner Casey. Bring all of us up here, we must from that. Now let's get in place what needs to be done. These are actions that can be taken simultaneously, and we need to be taking them simultaneously. Okay, so now, before y'all begin tonight, Adams Brothers, Red Dyson, whoever else, Jim, whoever else, prepare, if you want to prepare, now I'm sure you'll be there. I was speaking for him, but if that's what's gonna bring us to a resolve, let's get this thing done. There's no reason, we have a plan there, it can be beneficial to the entirety of the city of Brunswick, not just the city of Brunswick, but to the entirety of the county of Glen. And that's what our aim, and that's what our main purpose should be about. I see what I see.
You know, uh, that's, that's good, and I think we need to do that, and I'll tell you what, uh, we will make a decision, one with a, we will make a decision, don't think that we won't. Guys, Commissioner, it's always to go forward, we want to, Commissioner, that everybody gets an opportunity to get together and, and so, now when it comes back to us again, uh, we, we're gonna make a decision. Uh, Commissioner, what I'm hearing is that we, uh, are not prepared to make a, make a decision tonight, and that, uh, once again, Commissioner, uh, and I know you stated that we ask, uh, for our staff and for, we may have said stakeholder last time, we mean property, property owners, and once we have, have the kind of stake in, in, uh, some of the issues that, that surround us with this plan, it's all right. So given that, have that meeting, when they have that meeting, when everything comes out from there, then we'll make to effectively make a decision to move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion for, like...
Okay, we have to, sir, who likes to prefer?
You can do it. I don't know why I'm sitting here tonight, I've always played it best for your eligibility, I believe you, I, I was surprised when Mr. Thank you, I stayed in some concern, nobody called and called me and asked me if I was ready to sit down, and if I wanted this back on this agenda. And, and again, I feel like the ladies who came up here, so, I don't know, is it what it is, it's something you need to be in favor of, or is it wrong? Whatever it takes, which, which, you get back which time you need, is really bad for nothing.
Hey, this, we, I'm sorry, we have all of these parties here tonight, is there not a reason that some type of meeting cannot be set before everybody leaves this place? I'm looking at the clock too, I've been working six, five A.M. this morning, but this is, this is something that needs to be resolved, so if you go ahead on, and if we get it back on the agenda, it can be ready to be resolved. Everybody's here tonight, my momma would say, don't put off the work, what you can do right now. Let's set a meeting date and time now. I ain't saying y'all gotta do it right now, meet before, before we leave here tonight.
I recommend first meeting October.
Recommend first meeting October?
Yes, sir.
Prefer to...
I prefer to first meeting in October.
Second.
So you all are gonna get together on a meeting date tonight before y'all leave this building, right? Okay?
All right, all right. Commissioners, if it probably goes to the second floor, the first I have to, I recommend in October, whereby that particular time, we will make a decision, one with a certain, where we going with this, we have had this thing too long, so, uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, um, my main question is, I'll always stay in my position, so I'm gonna reiterate all that. We have temporary design guidelines in place, they have been temporary for how many years now?
Twelve years.
At least two years?
Twelve years.
I mean...
Twelve, and it's temporary for twelve years?
Sure.
Okay, obviously, they're not great. Um, is there some measures that we, I mean, have we even adopted this temporarily? Or if we do, do we, are there a few other things that we need to consider putting in place temporarily that might prevent, I don't know, what we have down the pipeline, anything coming up, but...
It'd be more likely that we would be able to adopt, Commissioner would be able to adopt something in October, whether that be removing certain items, table them until we can come to a resolution, and have the majority of the plan, um, approved, or that we actually involve all issues and have full plan approved, I think that'd be more likely.
Okay, and the only other comment I would make regarding the meeting is, it's not just the people in this room, but there were a couple other folks, I think, that need to be included, we, we don't want it to be a private, private meeting, so...
Oh, yeah, yes, that's what it should be done. We all, we, and that's today, that's another, if this is it, if nobody's, if you're off...
We did that, we had our meeting last time, we called it Tuesday.
Well, this is, we, we gonna keep going, we gonna go another thirty minutes, that's good.
Okay, uh, uh, comments made, and, uh, you can see that it's a highly volatile subject, and Commissioners are very well engaged, and, uh, I've said that we haven't made a decision about this plan yet. So, uh, in the first comment, before I go over to the first, here is all in favor of the first, October first meeting, first meeting October, please raise your hand. All right, most of the carried damage there, I'm, I, listen, Kowalski, thank you for coming, for your presentation. I, I would actually think too, that we give a presentation to each one of us, or have Brad give us a presentation that walk us through this thing, it'd be a lot more than something else, so, I just smile, thank you.
Yes, my... Because I'm thinking, anyway, I'd rather we would call it, see the way that, maybe I'd like that, that's one thing. Now, we're using this thing, and I look at it like we're, 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 we're talking about private property law, which is what we're talking about, and making them public. And, and you've got to have a plan if you're gonna do that, and this does not give us a plan, it does not tell us where we're going to, and how we're walking, and, and, exactly, it does tell us where we're going to be, and why, it does not tell us, like, in Brunswick, or, 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 surely, we have access to pretty, we need to, this doesn't, and everything we offer here. But the plan has got to say that I will go and do, not just that you're going to do this, and that's what it does. It says, if you're going to have public access to trees, rivers, and, 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 and you got this, it's got to be more efficient, because it's really, but, 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 but,
Okay, uh, okay, then, I don't get to touch it off. Uh, Commissioner, before we move along, I'm gonna ask you to item number fourteen and fifteen, can we move that to, uh, that's meeting? I don't, I don't see it, it's in... Yes, that's right, let's follow me. I'm gonna go back, so you want to send that meeting?
For my conference.
Okay, I know, so, a couple of mine, forty, fifteen, if we do want, uh, for that to, uh, to move out. I felt emotionally, you said?
Second.
Second, and forty, fifteen, we move to, uh, next meeting, uh, the party, is that, is that? Okay, would you say ah?
Ah.
Forty, fifteen? Yes, sir. So, if we get you, please. Okay, number eleven, someone wanted you to use the big credit menu.
Uh, sorry.
Sorry, my, uh, yes.
Okay, uh, what you had before you, actually, we considered items number eleven, uh, twelve, eleven and twelve, I apologize, would be the ordinance and the resolution related to stormwater utility. Uh, this ordinance, ten fifty eight, came before you had the last commission meeting, um, October, actually... August first. And at that time, uh, we had a public here, uh, there were several people that commented, if you can recall it, it was, I believe, good public input on, but, not what public perception was, but the ability for us to clarify several things that were in the public, uh, that needed to be clarified. Uh, this is me brought before tonight to file, uh, consideration approval, it's been advertised, I believe. And I don't want there to be any public comments.
No question.
How, some of the items, uh, that if you're called from, from last commission meeting, that were discussed, there was a request for consideration of low income exemption. Uh, that was something we voted back to consult it, we looked at, uh, storm utility ordinances, and it wasn't something that was typically included, actually, we didn't see it getting here. Uh, we, we do have a low income credit or low income exemption on Solowieski, but it wasn't something that they never seen done, and the credit manual, when I, uh, when we took it back to them, and said, well, it's something we can do through the credit manual, the credit manual is essentially something that sets up parameters that a person could go achieve these things, to go do these goals, and that would reduce their fee, meaning if you did volunteer, the citywide cleanups, uh, the school board received it based on curriculum that they teach about stormwater, uh, maybe to, if people are doing the systems that are closed to prevent, uh, mosquito, uh, and necessary mosquito population, those are the types of things that we give to the credit manual. So that, I think, just as, heads up, that low income exemption, it has not been incorporated in this ordinance. And I just couldn't really find a way to sort of craft it and put it in there that would make sense. Um, it's not something that has to absolutely be scrapped, but it is not currently here. It is, the way it's been discussed, and, and in the same areas, uh, Solowieski removals, everybody should pay it, even lower than credit, Solowieski removal, taking off tax bill, and it's about being paid monthly rather than, um, the taxes. So, that is not, we did not, but what we did do is, uh, we took into consideration several, several of the other changes, uh, take a look at, or several of the suggestions. And then, the City Manager would discuss the two hundred or just five hundred square feet, we thought it would best to leave it as is, five hundred square feet, and go forward from there, because that's already the ordinance, that was already discussed in the study, and that would just be before we throw out.
We, we did not put in there anything about, uh, the value of the first, uh, construction on it, you know, I don't...
Uh, we did, we did add on page ten, uh, there's quite a discussion of potential sunset or review clause and provision. Uh, what I had in there is essentially that as the rate reservation is brought back to the city commission, so, uh, as we discussed, we would set a rate resolution, pass a rate resolution tonight to seven three ninety-five, we would pass a rate resolution next year to seven four fifty, I believe, and we would pass a rate resolution in the third year, we'd say, seven four seventy-five, which would go for, for the next three years, the third year, fourth year, fifth year. Uh, the review clause would essentially allow the city commission to review the success, or if there's not, we'll be coming in, every time the rate resolution is brought before you to be adopted. So every time we, the staff brings forth a rate or provision, setting the rate for the year, the city commission have the ability to review the finances, sort of going to audit, essentially, see the health of the fund, and make determinations to whether or not, I mean, obviously, you're setting the, the feet, you're setting the rate, so you have the ability to either decrease the fee if you thought, increase it if it's necessary, or, you know, consider the potential of sunset. Um, we, we also discussed that consultant, they advise, you know, stay, or necessarily terminating it out, like, because stormwater utility is something that is likely to be used...
Continued maintenance.
Before a long period of time to actually get the, the current system fully restored, and then to continue maintenance, to repair. That is on page ten, so that, essentially, that, I thought that you were going to...
Yeah, I think that's item four, item B, B.
Okay. And it does give the commission the ability to storm water utility if necessary.
Yes.
Think, or, you could, the changes. Uh, I've discussed, I don't know, the document versus two hundred square feet.
So you have to do all the items, that all the, the area works, that's a good action.
Yeah, and I, I think if you're called, you're not, I mean, he and I said that, I was saying, you know, I mean, to let them know that the public, what I thought is a good outcome, is to give the public a reflection of, and really express, uh, whether or not it's, you know, in favor or... and really express whether or not it's, you know, in favor or against, or just ask for clarification. So I emailed that night, and then we returned, we sat down and discussed. Quite a bit of the mailings, the public sort of informational, I guess, campaign that we could go through. He and I discussed if that investment would go down. Once, if it was approved, the fund starts safe and form.
Second, I think it's on page 5, the credit. Credit, credit, man. You mentioned, you said the text, maybe you said the text in stealing? There are key. There are a couple in the state of that.
I'm.
There are a couple in the state of that.
I know. I could be wrong, but I think if they ever, if they ever fall, I think the ordinance required to tie it to the sewer. It was solely.
Why is that? If there is public center sewer within 500 feet of a property, then that property requires the time to center sewer. So like you say, that's 700, everybody falls, that it might not be permitted for another 700, it would tie up the sewer. Okay. So that's. One question for you, Pierre, while you're.
That's the air.
On page 3, residential code of the quarrel of water, town, level, ready, basically, flat, related to. You're, you're in the credit.
Yeah. I flipped up one, I believe, flipped up one.
Yes.
So, you know, we've got a large body of water that runs parallel to Route 8. It happens to be in my backyard, back in my house. And it's a tradition under.
I'm afraid it's a good, I can't, I can't understand.
Yes, it is.
It's not a lot of.
I said one of our questions.
Can you do it?
I'm going to do that.
I'm talking to the manager about that. I agree with you.
Yes, wait, David.
Page eight. Up at the top there, eligible customer classes, SFR credit group. Or gutters, they are in there, or gutters, he told them that with them, built with stormwater. Unless, because you're really not reducing the runoff of the gutter. Unless you're ready to assist or some sort of collection. If you don't, you're going to have to.
How about into my foot?
Everybody itself is not really a raw production.
What about into my foot? That's, that's, that's not a front of your circle.
If, if you're showing that it's collected there in your front yard, rather than, say, like a vegetated swale or some sort of infiltration trench, rather than passing on through your yard into the gutter line of the street, it's a, that could fall by then. Residential green, you're right. I knew. Take that on my.
I'm going to put it back out, it's getting to the street.
There's a consideration of running a gutter from your house to this, catching on the other.
You've been there quite a long time.
We get the nervous up.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. Commissioners, our city attorney and also our fellow working directors brought from back and forth. This is the ordinance that we had to go back and forth with many times. Actually, this. And he went back and forth with many times, he got it right, and a couple things have changed. But all of them came back very soon. So I said that to say that overlay, we can, this should get better, we can tweak it so we can get it right. So next time it's up and forward, we'll be able to pass it. So we are here now, considering the adoption of the 1058 stormwater utility using the fee credit manual, and consider approval of resolution number 2018 that is stormwater utility using fee rate. Both of them have been presented by our city attorney. We've asked these questions and received answers. Everything seems to be, answering all the questions. And if there are any more warrants in this process, I'm sure we can amend our order that the commission wired us to say.
That's correct. Again, the credit manual as well.
Yes. So commissioners, I need.
I'm making a motion with Doc, ordinance number 1058, stormwater utility using fee credit manual. Any further discussion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Item number 12, consider approval of a resolution number 2018, that 13 stormwater utility using fee rate. Any questions? I'm going to take a most.
I'm going to vote you can just reapprove of resolution number 2018, 13.
Second. Most of second. Most of second for approval of resolution number 2018, that 13. Any further discussion? Hearing the all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay. Thank you. We've come to the end of our regular. Oh, sorry.
Unless you prefer 13.
13, I'm sorry. Can you refer? How much does it, does it, does it cost, though, issue?
Uh, not necessarily that.
Commissioner, do not, please say.
I'm making a motion to reapprove of item number 13.
Second. Most of second for the parole item number 13 as well to our next meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing the all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same way. I hope it carries, okay. We have a rule, we have a parole item 13, all in favor of 15 to our next meeting. Okay, we've come to the end of our regular process. This is, I know there's need for a second session.
All right, all right. Litigation, real estate.
Let's make a point.
We're going to have a long swing week. We're going to take a session for litigation, real estate, and personal.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And most sounds out, and we still. Still, we'll go to the second session, and after we come back in. During our.